Here we go. We are calling to order the spring edition of the Wakefield Town Meeting. Always open to ideas. Nice criticism, whether we set up an out of town section for voter or for non-voting members who are out of town over here. So just to keep, you know, keep things clean. But tonight, it doesn't look like there'll be an overlap. The first thing is Betsy Sharon will lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands by my nation, by my God, and invisible for the liberty and justice for all.
Yeah. What do I have to do with that? No. Yeah, okay. Return of service. I Constable Kevin J. Lopes hereby certify that I have posted the annual town meeting warrant, May 5th, 2025 on 4/18/25. Signed, Constable Lopes. Thank you. Yeah, I got it. Okay. Just briefly, when I first ran for this office eons ago, I read everything I could about town meeting, all the case law and stuff like that. And I've tried to always stay up to date. And it's easy because all the town, well, not all, but a majority of the town moderators in Massachusetts have an association. We have something called the Gavel Line. We have an annual meeting and we have a regional meeting. And what has come up, and I thought was kind of some interest, if you'll bear with me for a couple of minutes here, is the history of town meeting. And it's been highlighted because this year was the 250th anniversary of Concord and Lexington. So I've cobbled together some thoughts I've gathered from a variety of folks and particularly from Alan Folds, who's the Reading Town Moderator. Because back when this all happened, we were part of Reading. We were the parish of South Reading. So if you will, on the early morning of the 18th of April, 1775, a mounted messenger named Martin Herrick rode into town to alert John Brooks, the newly elected captain of the Minuteman Company, that the British troops were on the march to Lexington and Concord. As Herrick rode off to his next destination, bells pealed and signal shots were fired in the predawn sky alarming to alarm Reading's militia, many of whom were from right here in the South Parish. The group of amateur soldiers from all walks of life, farmers, tradesmen, teenagers, six years old, grabbed their muskets and headed to Concord to face the world's most powerful army. They had little in the way of training or supplies. They didn't even have a country to back them up yet. And I have to imagine they felt virtually no chance, but they went anyway. We all know how it turned out, but many don't know the prelude. The war certainly started that April morning, but the revolution had its origins in the years leading up to those fateful days as colonials, particularly in the eastern portion of Massachusetts, okay? Who saw their rights eroding. The movement manifested itself in town meetings, this unique form of government that had already existed for more than 130 years. And you know, as I've said, ad nauseam, it is the purest form of democracy. The first sign of unrest at our town meetings in Reading and the South Parish here came in September 1773, when the townspeople discussed a letter from Samuel Adams asking a series of questions. Adams, of course, had started his, was sort of in the eye of the British because of his raucous town meetings in Boston. What are the rights as men and British subjects? Is Parliament supreme? Is there not a natural higher law, the only law that precludes and infringes on our rights to consent to be governed? Is that the right of Parliament decrees that we tried in the Admiralty Court rather than by our peers? At the time, Reading and South Parish, which is Wakefield, took no action. Then on May 17th, at a session of the Parish Meeting House, they discussed Article 9. Put the warrant at the request of the Boston Commission of Correspondents to ask Reading people show their minds relative to the letter sent by the committee by Adams. Reading townspeople reacted by standing by their British rights, subjects to fair trials and elected representation, but they went no further at that time. But then on December 27th, Reading Town Meeting switched its allegiance to the new Congress to appropriate money to that body instead of the royal government and further adapted the sentiments as our own, as our own. It adjourned until January 5th, 1775, when the town voted to form four militias, one of which was right from the South Parish, which would be Wakefield. At the annual town meeting a few weeks ago, a friend of mine, Mark DeSalvo, he's in Andover, he's head of the Mass Moderators Association, but he also, he and I get off on these history discussions at the regional meetings, which people want to stop after a while. And he said, North Andover, he said, "These local democracies by their nature taught Americans the virtue and responsibilities of self-government. It was through the conduct of town meetings that the colonial American public embraced the unalienable rights of self-determination, which in turn sparked a revolt and fueled a revolution. The voices they raised, actions, financial support committees and lives and liberties pledged at many town meetings in the Commonwealth remain our worthy heritage." So for more than a century before the revolution and the 250 years since, our citizens and town meeting members have maintained and strengthened our town meeting. Tonight, you occupy those same seats, those same positions, okay? And we carry on this amazing form of self-government. I just thought I'd share that with you because it seems, it's always so interesting that you sit here now as the legislature for the town. By the way, when I asked Alan Folds if I could borrow some of his remarks, he said, yes, but the biggest mistake was can we have the lake back? All right. And now we have Mr. Dan Sherman. Oh, thank you. Thank you. We have Mr. Dan Sherman, who will do the Dan Sherman thing that he does every year, much to our benefit. You can clap when I say something cool. That's the rule. Thank you.
So I think he just took five of my minutes.
It's your last meeting, behave.
All right. Good evening, everybody. Thanks for coming. So as I've done in the past, I've given everybody, am I good now? Can you hear me now? All right. Now he's blocked my screen. Anyway, so as I've done in the past, we'll give the financial picture of where we are today and what is our best guess. And I say our, it's just not mine. I've gotten a lot of input from Mr. Gill, Mr. Mayo, and many others in terms of what I think likely assumptions ought to be for moving forward. So on a receipt side, you'll see through 24, once again, our tax levy is the biggest piece of our receipts. State aid noteworthy has, we used to be 20% of our receipts and now it's barely over 10. So one of the things that's helped us is the fact that our tax levies, you know, the property taxes you pay has helped us quite a bit. It's very steady, steady income, unlike the state, but clearly the state's falling down. Our local receipts, these are monies that come in from investment return. You'll notice the yellow is quite a bit larger than normal. Those investment income is because of the high school that's going up a few miles from here. The interest on those bond monies that we receive are getting a much higher interest rate and therefore generated more. However, as those monies are spent on the bills for the contractors and so forth, that will go down. So 24 looked very good, but 25 is going to start suffering. And again, motor vehicle excise taxes is the biggest piece of our local receipts. As long as that stays up there, I encourage everybody to buy a new car every year. It really does help us out in terms of local receipts. Also note that the total is about $11 million. We expect that to be the number, about 11 and a half for 25. And we also expect that to be the number for 26, because some of these things like the investment income is, will be going away. We won't get that kind of money. And some licenses or permits, we have a lot of building around here, but some of that's going to wind down too. So you'll notice when we get to the forecast, we're using 11.5, which is about where it was in 24. State aid, as I mentioned before, it's not keeping up. We had a nice increase all the way up to 2001, and then we had the dot com bust and it dropped and dropped again with 2008 and its financial crisis. It's been creeping back up, but still woefully behind our schedule. We also have a stabilization fund as a balance. It's roughly at 3 million, sorry, above $4 million. And it's a percentage of our budgets running at 3%. So this is our rainy day fund and at roughly 3% of our total budget, it's combined with our free cash. And our free cash is running at about 10% of, at the end of fiscal year 24. However, we spent about $4.5 million last fall. So as of today, as we sit, our free cash is about 6.36% of our budget, combining with a 3% of the stabilization gives the totals about 9.5% of our total reserves. The policy by the finance committee and town council and Mr. Mayo, and hopefully his successor, is a 10% bogey. We want to have at least 10% in reserves in case we have some bad times. We did get some feedback from rating agencies that thought we ought to be at 15%, but we've all basically discounted that and say, you guys are crazy. No one's going to get 15%. So budgets, so going from 20 to 25, I had total budgets for the schools went up about 5.1% per year over that five-year period. Fire at 5.9, library 2.7, 4.8 police, and you could see the rest. So on total, over the last five years, our department budgets have been going up about 4.6% per year. For fiscal year 26, our expected reserves will, are expected to be at 9.7% at the end of the year of 25. In other words, we believe that by the time we get to the end of June coming up, we'll be below our bogey of 10%. We think we'll be at about 9.7. We may get some additional funds, maybe get a little break here. We might get back to 10%, but it's going to be tight. We also have some things that are on the table that we need to look at. $37 million for caper projects over the next five years is out there. We're going to spend a little more than $2 million this year and a little over $2 million for 26 is tonight's proposal. But obviously, we have a lot in front of us. Good news, fiscal year 25, we have zero snow and an ice overdraft and we've had zero for what, four years in a row now? Something like that, four or five years. So yeah, there's still time. Yeah, bite your tongue. And as I mentioned before, investment income is higher than expected. So in debt, we have a lot of debt. We have $28.8 million that are still due on the Public Safety Building, Greenwood Roof, Recreation, Galvin, Walton Roads and Drainage. We have a retirement unfunded liability of $61 million that we're paying off over the next 10 years, 2036, we expect to have that liquidated. OPEB unfunded liability, this is the other post-employment benefits, basically retiree medical costs. Our retirees do receive a nice benefit upon retirement. They're not paying 100% of the cost of healthcare. The town is picking up anywhere from 75 to 80% of that cost. So that liability is about 65 million. So we owe 155 million that will have to be paid off over the coming 15 or to 20 years. Come on, you can do it. There we go. So for fiscal year 26, we expect our revenue increase to be about 2.8 million or 2.3%. And the primary reason for this is the low increase in state aid that we're looking at and the fact that local receipts are expected to be level. Increased spending, 4.1 million on salaries, which is our biggest cost in the town. Retirement's an increase of 500,000. Healthcare is 1.7 million. Medicare, 58. Vocational schools, 100, and capital, 100. One of the things, because we're going to be running a significant deficit this year for fiscal year 26, we've cut the OPEB budget down to half a million dollars from a million for fiscal year 25. A few years ago, we were putting 1.6 million into post-retirement medical, but we've been slowly decreasing that. The plan is still about 38% funded, which is very high compared to our peers. But my fear is we really can't go to zero because I think the rating agencies would jump all over us if we did that. In terms of department budgets, they're increasing at $4.9 million or 5.5%. Schools, you'll hear tonight, it's at 5.9, police, 5.6, 4.8, and so forth. General Government, 14.7 is a little bit of an aberration because of shifting of personnel and it's a small group anyway. But I think the big issue here is, you know, is the revenue increase of 2.3 and department increases at 5.5. Does this thing work? I guess it does. Big challenges in front of us. Buildings, we've still got a lot of work to do there. We're doing work on the roads, sidewalks, playgrounds. We did have that bond for the roads. That was a big plus. We have a little bit more work to do on stormwater. I mentioned before, 37 million in caper projects. It's going to be very difficult to maintain a 10% reserves. And our fear right now is reductions in federal aid. The schools get well over a million dollars in federal aid. State aid to us often is, the state is just a conduit. Federal aid goes to states and then it comes to us. So we're very fearful at the finance committee about reductions in the aid numbers. And also right now, inflation is running quite a bit ahead of our revenue. On the forecast, we expect that we'll end up with 3.3 million coming back from the town departments and other sources. We're going to have a deficit of 1.7 million for 26 and 2.7 million for 27 and growing. We expect that we will run out of free cash. Our checking account will be empty come fiscal year in 29. And we believe if we continue on the path we're on right now, our reserves will be depleted by the fiscal year 30. And the key for that is if you look in the last two columns, based on our best estimate of increased cost versus increase in income, there's a gap, roughly 60 bips. And that continues all the way through for the next 10 years. So given these numbers, the finance committee is saying we're going to meet a little earlier in the fall. We're going to get started sooner. We're going to have to look at some cuts in services. There are some things that we're going to have to do if we're going to maintain a 10% margin reserves versus our total budget. So with that, lovely news, I'm going to, I'm going to end my presentation and any
Thank you. I'm Jim Sullivan, Chairperson for the Finance Committee. I just don't normally get up and speak after Dan does a fine job explaining all the budgets and everything. I just wanted to expand a little bit on the finance committee, you know, our role. So we review the budgets in detail. We meet with the department heads and subcommittees. We talk through the budgets at length. We ultimately vote on the budgets and you'll hear me get up and recommend favorable action tonight, like I have in the previous 10 or 12 meetings, I guess. One of the things we had this year, as Dan described, is a robust discussion about the budgets that will be before you tonight. Should we consider making some cuts in these budgets? Should we make some recommendations to maintain, try to maintain that 10% financial target? So back and forth on that discussion, we settled on making sure you're all aware that we want to proceed with caution. We are making favorable action on the budgets that you'll see this evening, and I'll be speaking about those as we go. But we are concerned, very concerned, because in the past, expenses have outpaced revenues in the past and we've used free cash. And then that free cash has been replenished from a number of vehicles, whether it's interest, as Dan described, departments returning funds, local receipts being higher than anticipated, the investment income. So, you know, every year for the last X number of years, we have presented to you a budget and used some free cash. The finance committee is getting concerned about having that free cash be replenished going forward. So I just wanted to reiterate that to you all, that as Dan says, we're going to look at things again in the fall when we have some numbers from the state, from the federal, from how things finished at the, at the local receipt level. And we're going to be using 1.7 million tonight to balance the budget going forward as we, as we need to do. You know, assuming our forecasts are correct, there is reason for concern and some actions will have to take place. If our projections are off a little bit or things come in better than anticipated, then we'll be back again saying that things are going to be okay. But it's, it's just a point that the rest of the finance committee, there's 15 of us, had robust discussion about this. And we just want to make sure that you're all aware that we're aware and getting a little concerned. So I don't know whether you say we have a spending problem or an income problem, but when I look at it, I think it's a little both. But I just think it's prudent to look at these budgets, approve these budgets, and then reevaluate when the numbers come in in the fall. Because spending does continue to outpace revenue and it has for quite a while. And just wanted to make sure from our discussions and debates, you're all aware. Thanks.
Before Mr. Mayo gets up, I have one more little piece of history. I've known Steve Mayo for a long time, long before he and I decided to venture into local politics. This is Steve's last meeting. I am severely prejudiced in terms of my idea of the job he's done. And there's going to be a series of events from now until he retires where everybody can get up and thank him and all this stuff. In fact, he's going to take more time to get off the stage than James Brown did. But, but anyway, I just saw it as, as a town meeting thing, I just wanted to acknowledge the amazing job that he's done during his period of time here. And you know what? This is another time you can clap, okay? Thank you. Yeah, thank you. That's at least one martini. Okay, you're up next. Oh, Dan, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Okay. Oh, you get to go up front, huh? Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Daniel Lieber, 1 Elm Street. I have a motion that the town adopt the proposal of the zoning bylaw as submitted to the town council by citizen petition heard by the planning board at March 25th, 2025 public hearing for this town meeting, including modifications to benefit the town, details of which are available.
Okay. There's a history to this. Dan, Steve and Tom Mullen and I have had a long email exchange of Dan's position on this. And basically what it comes down to, I'm not cutting him off for being rude. We've already sort of come to a decision upon this. This article was on the warrant. It was withdrawn. There is now no article regarding this on the warrant. Therefore, Mr. Lieber's motion is out of order and I will rule such at the time. Okay? Thank you. Mr. Mayo, pardon? Consent? You can do the consent, right? Okay. Yeah. Let me just run this by. You're all probably familiar with this. Now we've been using it for a couple of years. Consent agenda. All we do is regroup all the articles together that nobody gets up and talks about, really. They will be three, four, five, six, seven and eight. Steve will make a motion to take them out of order and we'll vote them all at the same time. I'm going to give you a minute to look at them, okay? Two things. His motion to take them out of order, that's two thirds, right, Mr. Mullen? And then one of the articles, number seven, involves eminent domain and that will require two thirds. So if we, if you agree to the consent agenda and nobody wants to take one of these out of the agenda, the whole motion will then be two thirds, okay? Does that, anybody got any questions on that procedurally? Okay. You know, these are the ones like $1 for the parking lot behind, you know, in front of the fire station, all those kinds of things. Okay, so Mr. Mayo.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, and thank you for your kind words. That the town vote to take the following articles out of order and as part of a consent agenda, articles three, four, five, six, seven and eight.
Is there a second? Any discussion? Everybody had enough time to look at these. Does anybody think that one of these articles merits discussion and shouldn't be taken out? Okay. All in favor? All opposed? Is there, is there no opposition? There's nobody, nobody's opposing, right? So that's why it's unanimous. So we don't have to count it. Motion carries. Am I, am I according to Hoyle here? Oh, you want to be heard on this? On the consent? Yeah.
That the town vote to approve the That the town vote to approve the following articles as part of a consent agenda.
Then you'll be up.
Articles three, four, five, six, seven and eight. The effective motions of each individual article will be as stated in the recommendation book.
Now, Fincom. That was procedural before, so. Thank you. Although I miss you all the time.
Generally, you do.
I know, I know.
So the Finance Committee does recommend favorable action on all of the items in the consent agenda.
Any discussion on the consent agenda? All in favor? All opposed? Anybody opposing? Unanimous. All right. Now to the budget. Mr. Mayo.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. That the town vote to raise and appropriate from tax levy or transfer from available funds, the sums of money as detailed in the following recommendations for the fiscal year July first, two thousand twenty five to June thirtieth, two thousand twenty six, the grand total amounting to one hundred and thirty four million, four hundred and sixty six thousand, four hundred and forty three dollars. The motions will be provided for the breakdown of this amount and the sources thereof in the various classifications as described in the recommendation book to carry out the purpose of this article.
Is there a second? Yeah, we won't vote on this because we vote on every general, we break down each division, you know, each section of the budget. So, Mr. Mayo, General Government?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Every fiscal year brings its own challenges and fiscal year twenty six is no different. And although we have enjoyed a good run of strategic expansion in many critical areas, I see difficult budgets ahead. Uncertain, uncertainty surrounding federal funds and what appears to be the non-prioritization of local aid at the state level will make it more difficult to deliver the most excellent services that our public expects and deserves. But I do believe that we have learned how to plan and execute for these situations. As country singer Eric Church would say, some of it we learn the hard way, some of it we read on a page, some of it came from heartbreak, most of it came with age and none of it ever came easy. But all of it helped mold us into what we are today. And I do appreciate working together with all of you over the past seventeen years. The budget presented continues our plan to steadily replace expiring grants with local dollars to continue some of the strategic initiatives that has helped protect and move Wakefield forward in the public safety, education, mental health, wellness and address our needs for smooth succession as some of our older employees phase out. Some other areas have not increased as much as we have liked, like capital. I hear from the Capital Planning Committee every year, I see them up there, that we don't give them enough. But we do not try to supplement that with grants which we continue to pursue. The strategic placement of our reserves does not come without a financial cost. And unlike some of our neighbors who are facing cuts or potential overrides for operations, we are currently not. But as Dan Sherman presented earlier this evening, we need to be ever vigilant and careful in our budgeting in order to maintain a solvent future. There will, there will need to be lowering of costs in some areas and exploration of more local revenue sources. And we need to trumpet to our state delegation that we need to get our fair share of state aid, particularly in chapter seventy education funding, where our per pupil allotment from the state pales against all our neighbors. Equalization in this area would add over one million dollars a year more from the state. Extremely important. We have worked long and diligently with the Town Council, Finance Committee and School Committee to constantly tweak our financial forecasts and hopefully ensure the strong balance sheet we all deserve. And by the way, I was and remain an optimist that Wakefield's future is bright. So once again, I thank all our wonderful volunteers, elected and appointed members of town committees, our steadfast town employees, especially our first responders who every day put their lives in potential danger to keep us all safe. And last but all nee, not last but not least, you, our brother and sister citizens, whose support is so important. In, in particular, I wish to thank my department heads, Kevin Gill, our Assistant Town Administrator and Chief Financial Officer, Liz Rock, our new town accountant. I want to thank John McCarthy, our town treasurer who just retired. We do have a new town treasurer, Ed Dombrowski, and we expect great things from him. Victor Santinello, our Director of Assessments, and especially my administrative assistant, Sherry Dalton. And I'm so going to miss all of you during town meeting time in particular. I want to thank the Finance Committee, School Committee and especially the Town Council for all their hard work, support and dedication. It is important to note that all the budgets and articles before you today of a monetary nature have been scrutinized and approved by either the Town Council or School Committee. And every budget or article undergoes more review and ultimately a recommendation from the Finance Committee. So with that being said, Mr. Moderator, I'll move on to the General Government portion of the article. And my motion is for this portion is that the town raise and appropriate the sum of three million, one hundred and seventy six thousand, five hundred and forty nine dollars for General Government and to provide therefore that the sum of forty five hundred be appropriated by transfer from the Wetlands Protection Act filing fees account to the Conservation Commission Personal Services account and the sum of three million, one hundred and seventy two, seventy two thousand, forty nine dollars be raised and appropriated from tax levy as stated in the recommendation book.
Is there a second? Mr. Mayo.
Thank you. The General Government portion of the town budget provides for the majority of the administrative departments of the town. The total amount recommended for General Government is three million, one hundred and seventy six thousand, five hundred and forty nine dollars, an increase of a hundred and thirty eight thousand, nine hundred and thirty eight dollars from last year. Although happy to answer any questions, the only real area of substantive change is in the Town Council Department as this budget includes fully funding the Assistant Town Administrator position as well as backfilling the position of Town Planner with tax dollars as we funded that position with ARPA funds last year. You will also note reductions in the IT and accounting departments as our newly hired town accountant, Liz Rock, who I believe will have a fantastic career here in Wakefield. Her salary is lower than a longtime town accountant. And as an added bonus, she is capable of handling some unice functions, so we're able to trim that position in IT. This budget also includes the Treasurers, legal, tax collectors, assessors, town clerks, election registration, Conservation, Finance Committee, Planning Board and Board of Appeals offices are all essentially level funded with the exception of contractual and negotiated items. Again, the recommendation for the General Government portion of Article One is three million, one hundred and seventy six thousand, five hundred and forty nine dollars with forty five hundred from available funds and three million, one hundred and seventy two thousand, forty nine dollars from the tax levy as stated in the recommendation book. It is supported by the Town Council and as we will hear, recommended by the Finance Committee.
Mr. Sullivan.
The Finance Committee recommends favorable action.
Discussion under the General Government portion of Article One. There being no motion, there being no discussion, the motion before you is to appropriate, Steve, do I have this right? Three, three million, one seventy six, five, four, nine? Yes?
Yes.
Thank you. All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries. Onto protection of persons and property.
That the town raise and appropriate from tax levy the sum of sixteen million, four hundred and eighty nine thousand, five hundred and eighty six dollars for protection of persons and property as stated in the recommendation book.
Is there a second? Mr. Mayo.
The protection of persons and property section of the budget for fiscal year twenty six has been set at sixteen million, four hundred and eighty nine thousand, five hundred and eighty six dollars, an increase of eight hundred and one thousand, one hundred and thirteen dollars or five percent. It includes the addition of one new police officer, which is surely needed to adequately protect our community. The Police Department budget, in the Police Department section of this budget is seven million, seven million, nine hundred and thirty one, one thousand, eight hundred and thirty three dollars. This budget provides for police force of eighty, forty eight police officers, including dedicated school resource officers at the Wakefield Memorial High School, Galvin and the Vocational School, as well as mission-specific positions which focus on domestic violence, mental health, substance abuse, as well as family-related issues. Our Police Department is recognized by the Commonwealth of Massachusetts as a certified police department. Only a handful in the state are so distinguished. I believe that not only is the certification a testament to the high quality and ideals professed by the chief as entire Corps of Officers, but has also been helpful in obtaining grants as well as adopting best practices for the, from the day-to-day operations as I to better serve the public while reducing the risks of lawsuits. It seems that almost daily I receive letters or calls about how professional and caring our Police Department is at all levels. We owe a great debt of gratitude to the Police Chief and his entire staff, particularly during these difficult times. And I take a little bit, I see the chief here, I see the deputy chief as well, this Cal here, I see him earlier. Thank you very much. Been a pleasure to work with you both. Thank you. The Fire Department budget is seven million, eight hundred and twenty six thousand, four hundred and six dollars. The increases are in contractual and overtime areas. I am happy to say that this budget continues to include the deputy chief and fire prevention officer positions, maintains the Greenwood Fire Station, as well as our continued adoption of best practices by ensuring that an officer is manning every piece of equipment. The budget also includes an overtime increase of fifty thousand dollars. I in the town are certainly grateful for the good work you do. And I do see the chief and the deputy chief here. And thank you very much for your service. Been a pleasure to serve with you as well. Emergency management is slightly increased as Tom Walsh's part is more full-time than part-time. The best dollar value around and Tom, thank you. I think I saw you come in earlier. Fire alarm, police signals and traffic light portions of this section are basically level funded with the exception of slightly increased to cover the rising cost of parts and hours. Inspection Services is increased due to contractual and negotiated increases. I for one am very impressed with how the Building Department manages all these tasks along with monitoring new construction. And finally, this department continues to be a great revenue source, generating, generating over seven hundred thousand in fees this year to date. And a great job at that whole department. Thank you, Ben, over there. Thank you, Ben. The Animal Spectrum Parking Court's budgets are basically level funded. The entire amount requested for protection of persons and property is sixteen million, four hundred and eighty nine thousand, five hundred and eighty six dollars, all from tax levy.
Mr. Sullivan.
The Finance Committee recommends favorable action.
Discussion under the second section of Article One, protection of persons and property. Mr. Lieber.
Thank you. Daniel Lieber, One Elm, just real quick, if you can dictate exactly which number it may be, the way the microphones are picking up the numbers, but they're not being relayed correctly. And I heard sixty million as in six zero. I'm not sure if that's one six, so if you can.
I think the Police Chief wanted six zero, but I cut him down to one six.
Okay. I'm sure the Police Chief and Fire Chief would be very delighted.
Thank you. Best you can, Ian, best you can. It's all we can ask for. All right. The motion before you is that the town appropriate sixteen million, four hundred and eighty nine, four hundred and eighty nine thousand, five hundred and eighty six dollars. All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Mayo, Human Services.
That the town raise and appropriate from tax levy the sum of one million, ninety six thousand, six hundred and ten dollars for Human Services as stated in the recommendation book.
Is there a second? Mr. Mayo.
The request for Human Services portion of Article One is one million, ninety six thousand, six hundred and ten dollars, an actual reduction of thirty three thousand, seven hundred and twenty one dollars from last fiscal year. The budget reflects all contractual increases as well as the reductions in the Health and Human, excuse me, as well as the reductions in the Health and Human Services budget due to the rightsizing of certain salaries and in the Veterans Budget, which reflects our withdrawal from the agreement with Merrose and Saugus, as well as the fact that most veterans are receiving direct federal, not state benefits that throw through, that flow through our balance sheet. And so that's why we have a slight decrease in this budget. The requested budget for the Council of Aging is two hundred and ninety eight thousand, six hundred and twenty six dollars, an increase of eight thousand, two hundred and twenty eight dollars mainly due to contractual and negotiated increases. Council of Aging continues to do a marvelous job under the direction of Karen Burke and her wonderful staff. And I think I'll be a patron there more in the near future, so if Karen's around, maybe she'll see me. Recreation budget is increased by five thousand, three hundred and twenty two dollars. Demograph and his staff continue to provide great programs for the community, young and old. And his recent management of the Albion Cultural Exchange is an unqualified success. I expect an explosion, another explosion in activities this summer, so sign up as soon as programs become available. I hear that Dan even has a golf clinic guaranteed to correct your slice. Is that true, Dan? Because I'm signing up for that one. I don't see Dan. I thought it was funny, slice. People who have golfed with me would understand that. The Veterans Department, Benefits Department administers payments to recipients of hospital and medical benefits as well as ordinary substance, subsistence benefits. The town has reimbursed up to seventy five percent of these costs by the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. As I stated, we removed ourselves from the District of Merrose and we now will have a full-time coverage for our Wakefield veterans at actually a little bit of a smaller budget, which is great. Special thanks to our Veterans Advisory Board. This board continues to assist in the outreach effort, provide the best possible services for our veterans. As I said, altogether, the total recommendation for Human Services section of Article One is one million, ninety six thousand, six hundred and ten dollars, all from tax levy.
Mr. Sullivan.
The Finance Committee recommends favorable action.
Any discussion? Under the Human Services portion of Article One. There being no discussion, the motion before you is that the town raise and appropriate one million, ninety six thousand, six hundred and ten dollars. All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries. Public Works Department.
That the town raise and appropriate the sum of eight million, three hundred and sixty four thousand, five hundred and forty six dollars for Public Works and to provide therefore that the sum of one hundred and seven thousand, five hundred and ninety two dollars be appropriated by transfer to the Public Works Personal Services account from the following accounts. Perpetual Care Income, forty eight thousand, three hundred and two dollars. Park Trust Funds Available, two dollars. Sale of Lots Funds, fifty nine thousand, two hundred and eighty eight dollars and the sum of eight million, two hundred and fifty six thousand, nine hundred and fifty four dollars be raised and appropriated from tax levy as stated in the recommendation book.
Is there a second? Mr. Mayo.
Thank you. The request for the Public Works budget is eight million, three hundred and sixty four thousand, five hundred and forty six dollars, an increase of two hundred and fifty five thousand, five hundred and sixty seven dollars or just three percent over last year. You know, the DPW budget is one of the last budgets that I always get and I am always very grateful that it comes in really lean and mean. And Joe and your whole staff, thank you. Always a pleasure. The staffing, and I want to mention that all unions are under contract in the DPW budget. So there are no outstanding union contracts on the town side. They're all included here. Staffing level for Public Works will be seventy eight, including water and sewer in fiscal year two hundred and twenty six. However, I need to point out that staffing levels are still short of about the eighty four that was employed in the nineties. Public Works Department has done an excellent job in preparing their budget and maintaining the town's infrastructure under difficult fiscal constraints. The funding added to this budget is greatly needed and will do a long, go a long way to improve a great community. But this is a no-frills budget. It is a budget that provides efficient, effective and economical services to the community. And the DPW's professional approach and dedication has been key to maintaining the core services that they provide. Again, the recommendation for this portion of the budget is that eight million, three hundred and sixty four thousand, five hundred and forty six dollars be appropriated with eight million, two hundred and fifty six, nine hundred and fifty, nine hundred and fifty four dollars from tax levy and a hundred and seven thousand, five hundred and ninety two dollars from available funds.
Mr. Sullivan.
The Finance Committee recommends favorable action.
Any discussion under the DPW portion of Article One? There being no discussion, the motion before you is that the town raise and appropriate eight million, three hundred and sixty four thousand, five hundred and forty six dollars. All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries. Public Works Enterprise Department.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. That the town raise and appropriate the sum of seventeen million, four hundred and thirty thousand, one hundred and seventy three dollars for Public Works Enterprise Departments and to provide therefore that the sum of seven million, eight hundred and ninety three thousand, six hundred and ninety one dollars be appropriated by transfer from water receipts to the various water divisions budget accounts as listed in the recommendation book and the sum of nine million, five hundred and thirty six dollars, four hundred and eight, nine million, five hundred and thirty six thousand, four hundred and eighty two dollars be appropriated by transfer from sewer receipts to the various sewer division budget accounts listed in the recommendation book.
Is there a second? Mr. Mayo.
Thank you. The Water and Sewer Divisions are self-sustaining departments and are not part of the tax levy. These two budgets are well structured and ensure that we continue to maintain and improve our water and sewer infrastructure and, most importantly, I guess, provide safe drinking water to the community. This budget, the, I'll talk about the water side first. The water side budget has increased four hundred and seventeen thousand, two dollars mainly due to an increase in the MWRA assessment. I note that the MWR, the MWRA amount represents forty seven percent of the budget. And while the final MWRA assessment will not be set until late June and may increase or decrease depending on the. depending on the final MWRA budget that is adopted, we feel pretty confident in our number. On the sewer side, this budget has increased one hundred and sixty-two thousand three hundred and three dollars. It is important to note that the MWRA sewer assessment represents seventy-one percent of that total sewer budget. And again, the final MWRA sewer assessment will not be set until late June, and again may increase or decrease depending on the final MWRA budget that is adopted. But I have to say that both these budgets are well structured and ensure that we continue to maintain and improve our, improve our infrastructure, provide safe drinking water, and allow the Public Works Department to meet its public safety and first responder responsibilities. And the DPW and Joe and his staff have done an excellent job in minimizing increases in this budget. So the recommendation for this portion of the budget is that seventeen million four hundred and thirty thousand one hundred and seventy-three dollars be appropriated from the respective enterprise divisions.
Mr. Sullivan.
Yes, the finance committee recommends favorable action.
Any discussion under the Public Works Enterprise Department portion of Article One? There being no discussion, the motion before you is that the town raise and appropriate seventeen million four hundred and thirty thousand one hundred and seventy-three dollars. All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Lyons, School Department.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Good evening. For FY twenty-twenty-six, that the town raise and appropriate the sum of fifty-five million five hundred and forty thousand one hundred and sixty-one dollars for the school department, and to provide therefore that the sum of one hundred and fifteen thousand dollars be appropriated by the transfer to the school department, contractual services, bus transportation allocation, from the offset receipts from twenty-twenty-five bus transportation user fees, and that the sum of fifty-five million four hundred and twenty-five thousand one hundred and sixty-one dollars be raised and appropriated from the tax levy. The total recommendation for the school department is fifty-five million five hundred and forty thousand one hundred and sixty-one dollars.
Is there a second? Superintendent Lyons.
Thank you very much. In preparation for our budget this year, we started in October. Christine BuFagna, our school business administrator, Cara Morrow, our assistant superintendent, Rosie Galvin, our director of special education, and the district team, has worked tirelessly to make the budget process more accessible and to inform the public about the decisions we're making and what our budget priorities are. This has led to the creation of a new survey tool, which has increased survey participation and getting feedback from parents, and also a budget video to inform the public about our process and our priorities. We have led, facilitated, and taken part in meetings with principals, faculty, and staff from all schools. The finance subcommittee and our FinCom liaisons have added a new budget workshop, which we met on Saturday, March twenty-second, partnering with administration and town leaders to discuss all parts and cost drivers of our budget. We have collaborated with the Finance and Facilities Subcommittee, along with Steve Mayo and FinCom, to better support the town budget with chargebacks from revolving accounts, for employee benefits, and to create offsets to decrease the overall budget that we are seeking this evening. We have collaborated to better support capital expenditures, to decrease the amount of capital requests for schools. The School Committee Labor Subcommittee and the administration are in the process of working to settle three more contracts this spring, for six total that we will settle this year. Still outstanding are the paraeducators, our custodians from AFSMI, as well as our traffic supervisors. Most importantly, we are collaborating and working very effectively with all stakeholders and paying attention to the climate, not only nationally, but internationally, and we're paying very close attention to what's happening with the Federal Department of Education, federal funding that's coming to Massachusetts and impacts Wakefield directly, as well as kind of supports that, that kind of fund positions through federal, federal grants. So just a few kind of comments this evening. So when we look at increasing costs year over year, salaries are our biggest cost driver. This year, we have a five-point-one-five percent increase overall from FY twenty-five. That includes with the offsets that we'll be applying from revolving accounts. We can talk more about that as I go through the slide. Utilities have grown year over year. We have a new transportation contract. Our out-of-district tuitions have also increased. So our multilingual learners, formerly our, our, our multilingual learners, formerly our EL learners, right, they're students whose home language is, their first language is not English. They've come to us, so not only are the numbers of increasing, but we have older students with more kind of complex needs in these areas as well. So we're going to need to expand staffing to meet student needs. We're also going to need to, this will be done through no new positions. This will be reconstituting positions that we have within our current budget. We're also looking at enhancing curriculum and course offerings to better support students as well in this space. We make note of special education and programs that are being constructed. Rosie Galvin, our special education director, has been really remarkable managing with Christine BuFagna year-over-year costs. They have worked very, very closely together, being very thoughtful about kind of costs that have been passed through back to the district and how we've managed those costs. So special thanks to the both of them. We're also looking at out-of-district placements. Our number of out-of-district placements has, has increased, but when we look at kind of our out-of-district costs over the last five years, and we look at kind of the, the year-over-year costs and how those have been managed, when we compare those on a five-year look, look back to our surrounding districts and, and all districts in the Middlesex League, we are among the very best in terms of managing those costs. So again, that speaks to their planning and their leadership in that space. We've talked about revolving accounts in last year's meeting. We talked about our plan from our five-year plan to kind of use revolving accounts to support and as an offset, the overall budget or the money that we're asking from the tax levy. This year, from Wakefield Academy, we're asking, we're going to provide seventy-five thousand dollars from Doyle Preschool. There's a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollar offset, and from facilities rental, there's a fifty thousand dollar offset. And this offset is, is represented in kind of the overall amount of money that we're asking for, and it's actually decreased by that amount of money. So we're very pleased to be able to provide those offsets to kind of minimize the amount of the budget that we're asking or that we're seeking this evening. This is a kind of a year-over-year comparison, FY twenty-five to FY twenty-six. You'll see that personnel and contractual services, or, excuse me, contractual services and materials are essentially level funded, with the largest cost being in personnel. You'll see an asterisk next to the FY twenty-six, forty-six million seven hundred and seventy-six thousand five hundred and fifty-nine dollars. The reason there's an asterisk there is because it's decreased by the offset above. The overall increase that we're looking for this year is a five-point-nine-four percent increase that we're seeking. Happy to take any questions that anyone might have at this time.
Well, we're going to get, Mr. Sullivan, you're up on this?
Yeah.
Yeah, so. Then we'll take questions. Okay.
The finance committee recommends favorable action.
Any discussion under the School Department portion of Article One? Mr. McLaughlin.
Bob McLaughlin, three seventy-six Water Street. Dr. Lyons, a quick question. Are our schools full as far as classrooms and capacity goes?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes. At our, at the elementary level, at pre-K one, we, our classroom sizes are higher than they are at three, four, certainly at the middle school, and in the, at the high school, they're a little bit lower. Our class, student, our teacher-to-student ratios are a little bit less as we go up. So our lower grades are pretty full, pre-K one, pre-K K one, and really two.
So projecting out over the next five or ten years, do you feel that we're going to be requiring more, more or less classrooms?
That's a great question. We, we've done a, as part of the new construction for the high school.
Yes.
We've worked with an independent contractor, and we've done a ten-year look and at kind of looking at what the increases are, and we do anticipate an increase, but we anticipate an increase in the footprint, within the footprint that the school should be able to support. And so that, but that's kind of, again, through an independent contractor, and so, but that could change in a moment.
I think my concern is more on the elementary side, to be honest with you.
Yeah.
And I just did a quick check here. Mass Department of Higher Ed, in district expenditures for pupil in Wakefield, if I got this correct, is twenty thousand fifty-seven dollars per student.
Yes, sir. That's, that's an all-in budget. That includes all of our grants and everything.
Exactly, exactly. That's a lot of money, and so I guess this is going to tie in with an article down the, down the line here a little bit, but when we start adding, because it's hard to project how many, if you have a definite number of like homes and apartments and bedrooms, and you can probably project how many students are going to be coming into your system. But the wild card here is this unfunded state mandate that we're looking at for accessory dwelling units and also for the MTA forty-eight zoning. So that's a wild card, because you don't know the number of occupants coming into town on those, on those two levels right there. And I think, talking on Dan Sherman's point, I think this is really going to be, this is really going to do a number on this town. This is, I really, I really think it's going to be a problem. So I think we're probably looking at probably some temporary classrooms, additional, or additions to some of the elementary schools coming down the pipe. That's, that's, that's what I believe, but we'll see.
Yeah, I, again, at this point, you know, in, in looking at our numbers, our numbers at the grades that I just shared.
Sure.
Are higher than, than both middle and high in terms of teacher-to-student ratios. But numbers also don't equal need.
Mm-hmm.
Right? And so, you know, I, I like to, when I talk with, work with principals, we talk about, you know, a few students with a lot of need can, can require support and vice versa. So, you know, a number doesn't necessarily equal need, right? So there's, there's a lot, lot going into that equation. But your, your point is well made, and we, we too are watching new construction. We're watching, you know, families, and are paying very close attention to our overall enrollment. Right now, we're at about thirty-four hundred students, which is, the number went down slightly during COVID, but it's starting to come back up again.
When the, when the build-out, which is going on in town right now, when that, when full occupancy, I think you're going to be surprised. I think there's going to be a lot of kids coming into town, coming into your school system, and we'll see what happens. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any further discussion under the School Department portion of Article One? There being no further discussion, the motion before you is that the town raise and appropriate fifty-five million five hundred and forty thousand one hundred and sixty-one dollars. All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Superintendent Lyons. Mr. Mayo, Library.
That the town raise and appropriate the sum, appropriate the sum of two million eighty-eight thousand five hundred and twenty-five dollars for the library department, and provide therefore that the sum of fifty-three thousand eighteen dollars be appropriated by transfer to the library materials and supplies account from the library trust fund income available, and the sum of two thousand thirty-five, two million thirty-five thousand five hundred and seventy, five hundred and seven dollars be raised and appropriated from the tax levy as stated in the recommendation book.
Is there a second? Mr. Mayo.
Thank you. Request for the library is two million eighty-eight thousand five hundred and twenty-five dollars, a meager increase of three-point-two percent over last year's budget. I am happy that the budget meets the required state standards and that Sunday hours will continue to be fully funded in this budget as they have been. The recommendation for the library is two million eighty-eight thousand five hundred and twenty-five dollars with two million thirty-five thousand five hundred and seven dollars from tax levy, and fifty-three thousand eighteen dollars from trust fund income. And I think it's telling that at a town, one of our neighbors tonight, they're having a discussion about cutting the library budget, and some people are pushing to close it. So I'm grateful that we are able to, you know, fund this, and want to thank Catherine McDonald and her staff. It's a wonderful place to go, and very inviting. So thank you.
Mr. Sullivan.
The finance committee recommends favorable action.
Any discussion under the Library portion of Article One? There being no discussion, the motion before you is that the town raise and appropriate two million eighty-eight thousand five hundred and twenty-five dollars. All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries. The Voke.
That the town raise and, the town raise and appropriate the sum of two million six hundred and fifty-nine thousand three hundred and twenty-seven dollars from the tax levy as stated in the recommendation book.
Is there a second? Mr. Mayo.
Thank you. This budget represents an increase of one hundred thousand eight hundred and forty-two dollars over last year, and is based upon the enrollment of ninety-eight students at the Northeastern Vocational School. Last year, we had a hundred and one, as well as zero students at Minuteman Regional in Lexington, and nine at Essex North Shore Regional in Danvers. This amount also includes Wakefield's share of the yearly cost of the new vocational school. That is four hundred and sixty thousand nine hundred and ninety-four dollars. We do expect the yearly cost for construction to increase over the next few years, and have accounted for that increase in our forecasting models. Over the years, the Voke has adopted many cost-saving measures, including entering the GIC. I will point out that the amount of this budget is however contingent upon state funding, Chapter Seventy, and regional transportation at the currently stated levels. Hopefully, they'll go up, and this budget will actually come down a little bit. The request and recommended amount is two million six hundred and fifty-nine thousand three hundred and twenty-seven dollars.
Mr. Sullivan.
Finance committee recommends favorable action.
Any discussion under the Library portion of Article One?
Voke.
Voke, sorry. I'm behind. There being no discussion, the motion before you is that the town raise and appropriate two million six hundred and fifty-nine thousand three hundred and twenty-seven dollars. All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries. Unclassified.
That the town raise and appropriate the sum of two million seven hundred and sixty-eight thousand one hundred and six dollars for the unclassified portion of the budget as stated in the recommendation book, and provide that two million two hundred and seventy-four thousand six hundred and six dollars be raised and appropriated from the tax levy, and four hundred and ninety-three thousand five hundred dollars be raised and appropriated from available funds.
Is there a second? Mr. Mayo.
Thank you. The recommended total for the unclassified portion of this budget is two million seven hundred and sixty-eight thousand one hundred and six dollars, an actual decrease of one million three hundred and sixty-one dollars over the current year's budget. It is important to note that cable income continues to drop, which is a result of the decrease in cable franchise fees, as more turn to streaming devices and limit the use of cable. This trend will continue year over year, and the town council is working on a solution as to how we as a community fund this vital service in upcoming budgets. The two accounts that increase in this budget is general insurance portion and Medicare portion. Medicare, which is due to the fact of a higher payroll. Medicare is based on payroll. This account pays for the town's share of Medicare for anyone hired after April first, nineteen eighty-six. And insurance just went up because insurance going up everywhere. Remaining portions are level funded. The recommended portion for unclassified portion of Article One is two million seven hundred and sixty-eight thousand one hundred and six dollars with two million two hundred and seventy-four thousand six hundred and six dollars from tax levy, and four hundred and ninety-three thousand five hundred from available funds.
Mr. Sullivan.
The finance committee recommends favorable action.
Any discussion under the unclassified portion of Article One? There being no discussion, the motion before you is that the town raise and appropriate seven hundred and sixty-eight thousand one hundred and six dollars. All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries. Benefits and Administration. Mr. Mayo.
Yes, that the sum of twenty-one million eight hundred and twenty-four thousand nine hundred and twenty-two dollars be raised and appropriated from tax levy for benefits and administration as stated in the recommendation book. Thank you. The amount requested for benefits and administration reflects an increase, I heard it. The amount requested for benefits and administration reflects an increase of one million one hundred and fifty-four thousand seven hundred and thirteen dollars over. over last year's budget or 5.5%. The program of benefits provided by the employees' retirement system and the group insurance budget is set by statute with the employees' contribution to the group insurance cost determined by negotiations. The appropriation for the retirement system for fiscal year 2026 is $7,518, excuse me, $7,518, reflecting an increase of $244,130 or 3.6% over last year. This appropriation is based on an amortization schedule the town initiated in fiscal year 1988 and updates every two years and is scheduled to end in fiscal year 2036. And at this point, there's about 180 million in this account, about 74% funded. The workers' compensation budget request for fiscal year 2026 is increased by $134,010, which is because we had a couple of years of bad employee injuries. But I'm happy to note employee injuries have been trending lower, much lower, which should result in savings in years to come. In January of 2012, the town of Wakefield was one of four communities who were able to join the state's group insurance commission. This was only able to occur due to the prompt action of the board of selectmen at the time in adopting the change in state law and subsequent agreement with the Public Employee Committee and the underlying unions. Due to this change in insurance, the town has saved millions of dollars. In fact, in 2012, our cost of insurance, this budget was over $14 million a year without funding of any OPEB. In fiscal year 26, our budget amount is $13,945,100 and this figure includes funding OPEB at the amount of $500,000. We do have $36 million in OPEB and as we said, many communities have a lot less. So I am proud and that is something that we do keep to continue doing over the near future. I opened the meeting with some of the pain involved in learning and due to the very large increase in health insurance costs nationwide, the GIC is being no different. The difficult decision to lower OPEB for this year to $500,000 was made and this was actually learning from heartache. It was a lot of conversations between myself, Kevin Gill, the Finance Committee. We felt we had to keep a healthy amount in there, but it is something we need to look at. And hopefully we'll be able to increase it in future years. But I have to say, the overall movement to the GIC still continues to pay dividends as our Human Resources Department of Amy Forziati, Karen Doucette, and now Bonnie Lavoy continue to work with our employees to enroll them in cost-effective plans for both the town and the employee, saving thousands and thousands of dollars a year in premiums. In fact, with our opt-out program, we've, we are going to save an estimated $690,000 in unpaid and avoided premiums for this year. So despite an increase in health insurance at the GIC level and the plan cost of 12%, we still kept that number down. We're very ahead of the game. The recommendation for the benefits and administrative portion of this Article One is $21,824, 824,922.
Mr. Sullivan.
Finance Committee recommends favorable action.
Any discussion under the benefits and administration portion of Article One? Mr. Sherman.
Dan Sherman, 16 High Street. Just to add a little bit more context to this. As I mentioned at the beginning of tonight's meeting that we used to put in 1.6 million into the OPEB fund. This total budget for the group insurance and life insurance is a 5.8% increase. Had we not decreased the OPEB budget by a half a million dollars, it would have been 9.6%. This is largely because of the GIC increases that Mr. Mayo had mentioned at roughly 12%. But one of the things to really kind of focus on is that if, if the GIC comes back again with another 10 or 12% increase, we're, we're not looking at 5.8 for next year. We're looking at 12 or 13%. Because over the last several years, this budget has returned about a million dollars back to the general fund. We were over budgeting this by a significant amount. And the reasons for that is that we were concerned about future increases. We knew the GIC could increase those costs significantly. So we were actually over budgeting, I think we pulled back over probably two and a half or three million dollars over the last four years. Those days are done. We do not expect to have that kind of return coming back from this line item for '26 and beyond. So I hope I'm wrong, but I'm afraid we'll be looking at another eight or 10% increase a year from now. So cross your fingers. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Any further discussion under benefits and administration portion of Article One? There being no further discussion. The motion before you is that the town raise and appropriate $21,824,922. All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Mayo, light department.
That the town appropriate the sum of $1,149,142 from the light operational account to the contributory retirement pension accumulation fund account and to appropriate the sum of $1,831,301 from the light operation account to the employees' group insurance account and to appropriate the sum of $47,495 from the light operation account to the workers' compensation insurance account and that the balance of the receipts of the municipal gas and light department from July 1st, 2025 to June 30th, 2026 be appropriated for the use of the department for other expenditures, provided however that if the income from said department shall exceed the expenses of the department for said period of time, the use of the excess in whole or in part shall be determined by the Board of Light Commissioners.
Is there a second? So Mr. Mayo, the number is 1113-438-505, correct?
113.
The prior page, right? Is that the total?
No, there's, there's, there's a number of, of numbers on that page. It's in prose.
Okay, what's, what's your, what's the total number of your motion?
It's, there's three different sections of the motion.
Okay.
Yeah, because they're coming from different accounts.
Okay, go ahead.
And that all gets added to the bottom of the page there to come up with the original 134 million.
Okay, all right. So second, do we get a second? Second? Thank you.
The final portion of this article allows for the orderly transfer of funds from the different accounts within the municipal gas and light department to the town's pension, group insurance, workers' comp, and retirements accounts as MGLD employees partake in these programs and are funded not from the tax levy but from the receipts of the MGLD.
Mr. Sullivan.
Finance Committee recommends favorable action.
Any discussion on the motion under the light department? The motion before you is the appropriations as set forth by Mr. Mayo. All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Article Two. To see if the town votes to raise and appropriate for the tax levy or transfer from bill of funds a sum of money for the capital outlay as follows or to see what the town will do about it. Mr. Renzi, you're up.
Ready?
Yeah, name and address.
That the town raise and appropriate from tax levy the amount of $2,152,966 and transfer the amount of $358,000 from the SOAR receipts to the SOAR department capital outlay account and the sum of $307,000 from the water receipts to the water department capital outlay account to carry out the purposes of this article.
Is there a second? And you are, just to identify yourself, name and address.
Philip Renzi, 8 Morgan Ave.
Thank you. Second, thank you. Okay, you're up.
Good evening. Capital Planning Committee, made up of myself as chairperson, Dan Calore, Tracy Clevercy, Frank Conte, Sam Hockenberry, Garrett Murphy, and Shane McCarthy. Each year, the committee meets town departments with the heads of the town departments to review their requests for capital outlay. These requests are compiled into a spreadsheet for evaluation. At the start, we were given with the tax levy, $8,556,000. There's a number missing there. Water division was $465,500 and SOAR division was $466,500 worth of requests. During the process, we meet, we met seven times this year over a six-week period. We evaluate all the requests. We meet with each of the department heads. They're invited to come in and we ask them to establish a rank and priority for their requests. We then ask questions and debate within the committee on those requests. We have to reduce the requests to meet the budget, which this year was approximately $2.1 million. This is a sample of some of the requests approved and you can find the full list in the booklet. We approved a request for two police patrol cars and one K-9 vehicle, a new fire department command vehicle, a dump truck with a snowplow, and a new senior center van. In the buildings, several HVAC replacements, the chiller replacement at the library, as well as two rooftop HVAC units, the two large garage doors at the DPW to be replaced, replacing the shingles and some foundation repairs at the town hall building, new tables for the civic center and replacing water heaters at the Galvin and the Woodville. Other miscellaneous requests approved, $125,000 for a new rubber surface in the rear Dolbeer. There's two playgrounds at the Dolbeer. This is the one in the back of the school. $35,000 for a new sidewalk snowblower for town buildings, onboard vehicle computers for the fire department, Walton School, the play area grass and fencing, and $50,000 for general townwide ADA upgrades. The recommended appropriation from the tax levy is $2,152,966. From the water enterprise, $307,000 and from the SOAR enterprise, $358,000. Are there any questions?
No, no, hold on. Mr. Sullivan.
The Finance Committee recommends favorable action.
Any discussion under Article, the motion under Article Two?
Sorry, Bob Mitchell, 6 Balding Street. Just a quick question. Don't want to delay, delay this at all. You mentioned hot water heaters at the brand-new Galvin School?
Correct.
Just a little detail on that and that's it. Thank you.
Sure, the one of the water heaters, which was out of warranties, broke. Like water heaters are very good at breaking right after the warranty expires. And so that happened at the Galvin. And the Woodville similar during our discussions. A water heater actually broke during our, and so those are the two water heaters.
Scott McGauley, 32 Wallon Road. You had in here $50,000 for townwide ADA upgrades. Did that include the Albion Street building? And did that include, I think it's 5 Common Street, one next to the town hall?
There was no specific items. It was a $50,000 ask for the town to spend on various ADA improvements within the town. There was no specific projects earmarked with that $50,000 when the request was submitted.
Mr. Moderator, I'd ask, is there anybody from the town here that might know if some of that money is allocated towards those two?
Mr. Mayo, do you know? Bill, do you know? Bill Renaud. Don't run. Jock.
Lightly jog?
Jock, lightly jog.
Good evening, Bill Renaud, town engineer and ADA coordinator. So we've been speaking with the Disability Commission on how to spend that $50,000 and one of the last meetings, we discussed the ACE building as a priority for temporary access or some type of kind of retrofit until we do the permanent one. And then we've also talked about the Colonel Connolly Playground and providing access with a path there too. So that's what we're earmarking at this point for those.
Okay, 5 Common Street, no?
Not at this point, no.
Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion under Article Two? There being no discussion. Motion before you that the town raise and appropriate from the tax levy the amount of $2,152,966 and transfer the amount of $358,000 from the SOAR receipts to the SOAR department capital outlay account and the sum of $370,000, $307,000 from the water receipts to the water department capital outlay account to carry out the purposes of this article. All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries. Article Three. Did we skip three? Up to nine. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Okay. Let me, I gotta get to nine, Steve. Article Nine, to see if the town will vote to appropriate a sufficient sum of money for the purchase of one 1,250-gallon permanent pumper truck for the use by the fire department and to determine whether to raise this appropriation by borrowing or otherwise to see what the town will do about it. Mr. Mayo.
That the town appropriate the sum of $1,300,000 for the purchase and equipping of a 1,250-gallon per minute fire pumper truck, including the payment of costs incidental or related thereto, and to raise this appropriation, the treasurer, with the approval of the Town Council, is authorized to borrow the sum of $1,300,000 under and pursuant to General Law, Chapter 44, Section 7.1, or any other enabling authority and to issue bonds or notes of the town, therefore to carry out the purpose of this article.
Is there a second? Mr. Mayo.
Yes, sir, the fire chief is going to comment on this.
Yeah, I sort of thought. Chief Sullivan. Long way to go. Yeah, no, I know, yeah.
Good evening. The Wakefield Fire Department is seeking $1.3 million under Article Nine for the purchase of a new 1,250-gallon permanent fire pumper to replace the department's current 2,000 C-grade fire engine for the same capacity. The department currently operates four 1,250-gallon per minute pumpers, a 2000, a 2006, a 2017, and a 2021. The present 2,000 pumper, Engine Four, is 25 years old, has exceeded its useful service life of 15 to 20 years. Fire engines normally run no longer than 15 years of frontline service and up to an additional five years of reserve service. Engine Four was purchased in 2000 at a price of $310,000 and it has served as a reserve engine since 2017. It responded to 165 calls during calendar year 2024. Engine Four is used to replace one of the other two engines or the ladder truck whenever they are down for repairs or service. It is also placed into service where the fire apparatus responds out of town on mutual aid during large brush fires in town and during major fires and weather emergencies. Should town meeting approve it, the new engine will have an anticipated frontline service life of up to 15 years with an additional five years as a reserve engine. It will meet current emissions and National Fire Protection Association standards for new apparatus and will be more than, more fuel efficient. Its engine will be greener, meeting Clean Air Act requirements. It will have improved LED compartment and scene lighting. It will also have an improved stabilization system, which will reduce the chance of vehicle rollovers. You know, it has improved seatbelt monitoring systems and a structurally reinforced crew cab that will help ensure firefighters are safer while responding to emergency calls. It would also be equipped with a stainless steel cab and body similar to Wakefield's other fire apparatus, ensuring that the body will last its anticipated service life with little or no body rot. Wakefield presently operates three pieces of fire apparatus at all times, two pumpers and an aerial ladder truck. The department also maintains two fully equipped reserve pumpers intended to replace the frontline engines should a breakdown occur or routine maintenance take a frontline fire truck out of service. The two reserve pumpers system ensures that each station has a replacement pumper ready to respond immediately if needed. It also increases the overall pumping capacity of the department to 5,000 gallons per minute. This increase in pumping capacity can positively influence the town's fire insurance rating in the future. Engine Four had considerable bodywork done to it in both 2003 and 2018. This included the replacement of interior supports for the pumper's 750-gallon booster water tank, some modern-out diamond plating in compartment walls, and a completely new paint job. This added life to the pumper, making it more reliable than one would expect from a pumper of its age. This model of fire engine is no longer manufactured by Seagrave and parts for, for it are becoming increasingly difficult to locate. The pumper is showing signs of excessive wear in both the engine and the water pump, which could cause it to unexpectedly fail at any time with little warning. It has served the town well, but now needs to be retired and replaced. Engine Five, the 2006 spare pumper, is also rapidly nearing the end of its Engine Five, the 2006 spare pumper, is also rapidly nearing the end of its anticipated service life. Recent repairs to this truck's water pump and body will likely extend the life of this engine for another two or three years as a reserve pumper. Engine Five will need to be replaced at the end of this three-year period, so in effect, the department will be looking to replace the 2006 pumper shortly after the new engine is built and delivered in 2028 or early 2029. The new pumper being requested will replace the present Engine One, a 2017 pumper, as a frontline pumper for fire headquarters. The 2017 pumper would then become the primary spare engine for the department being corded at fire headquarters. The 2006 pumper will then replace the 2,000 pumper and be assigned as a second reserve pumper for the Greenwood Fire Station. A new truck must be ordered and built while the department's reserve pumpers are still in good operable condition. A new truck will take approximately 36 months to be delivered. The long delivery time is primarily due to the backlog and new orders for fire apparatus resulting from the COVID-19 pandemic, when virtually no fire apparatus was built for a period of two years. The cost of a new fire apparatus has risen significantly since and due to the COVID pandemic as well. The average cost of a pumper is now between $1 and $1.5 million, the average cost of a ladder truck is now between $2 and $2.5 million. The cost of the stainless steel has increased significantly. Modern fire apparatus contains many electronic components and modules, as well as, which are increasingly difficult to obtain and constantly going up in cost. Any delay in ordering a new fire engine will only push back any potential delivery date and likely will increase the cost of the fire engine. It is important to note that all fire apparatus is custom-built from scratch and cannot be purchased from a lot of already-completed trucks. I respectfully request for the above-mentioned reasons that the town approve this article and allot the requested 1.3 million for a new fire engine. Thank you for your consideration of this matter.
Mr. Sullivan.
The Finance Committee recommends favorable action.
Any comment? Chief, don't go anywhere. Mr. McLaughlin is inquiring.
Bob McLaughlin, 376 Water Street. My microphone's acting a little funny. Is there a market for the used pumper on the secondary market?
The used pumper is most likely worth between $3,000 and $5,000. It's mostly scrap. The last time we had a pumper, we disposed of it for $3,000, and actually, the city of Malden picked it up.
Okay, thank you.
Elizabeth Lowery, 86 Green Street. Just a question for the chief. You mentioned a number, how many calls that the pumper went out on, can you remind me?
I believe it was 164, ma'am.
How many of those were fires?
Well, usually the reserve apparatus were responding to any major fire, so we had, last year, we had seven multiple armed fires, so at least seven.
So 100 and something non-fire. The reason I ask is, would the department save money if they had another vehicle that went to all the medical calls, instead of sending out a big fire truck every time somebody, you know, falls down the stairs?
Well, we get asked that question a lot, ma'am, and unfortunately, when we're out responding to other calls, if we should get a call for a structure fire, the delay in response time going all the way back to the station to pick up the pumper would be significant, and that's why we respond the way we do.
Well, I'm just thinking in terms of wear and tear on the engine and...
Yep, I understand the question, yep.
But you don't think it would be a good investment?
I know, ma'am, for that reason, it would probably double our response time to get to a structure fire, if something happened.
Okay, so if you're at, suppose, somebody's house because they had a heart attack or fell or whatever, and then you get a call for a fire, do you just drop the person and go?
Well, we try not to drop anyone, ma'am, but...
Sorry.
Sorry.
And Chief, touche.
The answer to the question is, it would depend. If the ambulance was on scene, and it was safe to leave them, with the ambulance personnel in other words, they didn't need additional help carrying the person outside or something like that, then yes, we would respond directly from that scene to the fire.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Deborah Fox, 12 Alyssa Drive. Is this a gas-powered truck?
It's diesel.
Diesel, okay, thank you.
Yep.
Any further discussion under Article Nine? Motion before you is that the town appropriate the sum of $1,300,000 to purchase the new pumper as described. Because we are borrowing, this requires a two-thirds vote, correct, Mr. Mullen? Always double-checking. All in favor? All opposed? Is anyone opposed? It is unanimous. No need to count, Mr. Mullen? All right. Article Ten.
Thank you.
To see if the town, thank you, Chief, good job. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from bill of funds a sufficient sum of money to design and obtain permits and approvals for a new salt shed, and determine whether the appropriations will be raised by borrowing or otherwise, to see what the town will do about it. Mr. Conway.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. That the town appropriate the sum of $395,300 to design and obtain permits for a new salt shed, including the payment of costs incidental or related thereto. And to raise this appropriation, the treasurer, with approval of the town council, is authorized to borrow the sum of $395,300, under and pursuant to General Law, Chapter 44, Section 7.1, or any other enabling authority, and to issue bonds or notes of the town, therefore, to carry out the purpose of this article.
Who's that? Is there a second? Thank you. Somebody turned your phone off.
So this article is to provide funding for the survey, design, and all necessary permitting that would be required to advance in the process of replacing the town's deteriorating salt sheds located at the Nahat Street Yardways site.
Mr. Sullivan.
The Finance Committee recommends favorable action.
Any discussion on the new salt shed? Oh, oh, you want to go to that one? Okay.
Dennis Clarity, 1 Havas Road. Most of the salt probably winds up in Lake Quanapala. Is there any discussion on switching to sand? Because sand is equal to traction for, when it's deposited on the snow, it's equal to traction, but it doesn't melt the snow, the ice. But it's, if we want to preserve the lake, it's perhaps not putting salt in the lake would preserve this and help clean it up. Thank you.
Okay, Joe, if you know that, you can answer it, even though, then we'd be appropriating for a sand shed, but this is salt shed, but if you can answer that, Joe.
Correct, so sand is one of the tools that we use in the winter, depending on what the precipitation throws at us. It will obviously determine what we're using at the time. Salt is obviously a component, we want to melt down whatever comes out of the sky, so that any, you know, additional melt will make it to the drains and won't create any other icing conditions, but your point is noted.
Scott McAlley, 32 Wallon Road. This is for $395,000 for design and obtained permits. Is there any idea what an anticipated total cost might be on this unit?
That's an excellent question. So this article is really to get a better understanding of that, because there's some unknowns, unfortunately, that will be involved in that. It could approach seven figures. One of the things that this will need to find out, if there are any other additional improvements, you know, as far as underground to hold the load up so it doesn't sink, and different things like that, so. In a perfect world, sometime end of the summer, early fall, we'll have a better understanding of the order and magnitude there, but, you know, in the million-dollar range, it is probably a safe estimate at this point in time.
I can tell you, it's all being built on old leaves.
Yes, yes, it definitely is.
So most of that area is watershed, and I would think would be conservation area, and I think before we spent $395,000 on design and obtained permits, that we checked with the Conservation Commission to see if this is even feasible?
So part of this appropriation is actually to do exactly what you just said, so flagging, delineation of the wetlands, and then citing this to make sure that this can go in the same general area. Our intent would be to move it as far away from any of the wetlands that exist down there as possible, understanding the constraints that may be underground, in the consideration of the budding neighbors and things like that.
And just to make this clear for people that might not be aware, this is at the pit, right, off Nahat Street?
It is, yes, it's in the rear of the property, it's actually off Nahat Street, approximately about 700 feet.
Okay. Do you know volume of traffic that's anticipated with that watershed? Because where do you store salt now?
It's in the same exact place. So this would be to repair, there's actually three bins down there now, that were put in there 1970s vintage, so this would be to replace it in kind, yes, in the same general area.
Okay, all right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Eleanor Axelrod, 19 Sheffield Road. How big are the current salt storage sheds, and how much larger are the ones you're proposing?
So what we have down there now, I believe we can store approximately 2,200 tons, give or take, and then what we'd be proposing really depends on what we have for site constraints on the property. I would say a safe bet is somewhere around 3,000 tons. What we want to make sure is that we have enough of the commodity available should we need to go back-to-back or multiple events before replenishment comes in, that we're able to do that.
Okay, and how far back from the Mill River is the current salt shed?
I don't have the measurement right on me now, but if you were to, as the crow flies, if you were to look down on them, they're essentially located right along, I'll call it the western border of the property. The distance from the Mill River, you might have a couple hundred feet, maybe, I mean, that's just an off-the-hip guess, though.
Okay, thank you. I had seen on historical maps that that area was a driven well at one point, and so it was used for water supply, and there was farming there, so I assume the groundwater level is pretty high, which could make it easier for contamination, so I see the need to replace the salt storage facility, but the location does seem less than ideal. Thank you.
Derek Carey, sorry. 152 Broadway. An observation and a question.
Yes.
We're looking at spending, as we've already heard tonight, we've got some financial concerns on the table. We're looking at spending $400,000 just for design and permitting and citing, and by your own admission, possibly a seven-figure payment for the salt shed.
Correct.
So if we agree to spend that 400 tonight, we're sort of locking ourselves into paying the extra money down the road, because then we throw away $400,000. So my question becomes, have any other alternatives been explored? Are there other town sites where this could be? Is there a, some sort of mutual situation that we could enter into with another community? What other options are on the table for this?
So I can tell you that due diligence, as far as looking at any piece of potential property, to locate this anywhere else, has been pretty exhausting. Myself personally would love to tell you that this is going to be located somewhere else where there's no environmental considerations needed, we're off the beaten path, we're not going to impact a residential neighborhood, but unfortunately, anything like that that exists and that's owned by the municipality wouldn't be able to house this. You'd need to locate it in a different area, would require acquiring some sort of private property to do so. Related to sharing with other communities, so two adjacent communities that have a smaller supply than we have, so those would probably be out, and then operationally, similar to kind of what the fire chief was saying, as far as response time and the amount of time it would take, if we were to go to Reading, say, for example, and actually have to leave town to get the loads and come back to, say, Greenwood down by the Melrose Line, you'd be talking about a substantially longer time to treat the roads.
But with regard to that, that's something you could plan for ahead of time, right? We know when the snow is coming.
Potentially, but public safety would obviously take a little bit of a hit in that regard, because it would take us longer to do a full treatment, which right now takes about five hours, so if you add in all that travel time, you could estimate it to be seven to nine hours, or something like that, to hit everything.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any further discussion under Article Ten? There being no discussion, motion is to raise and appropriate the sum of $395,300 through borrowing, which will require a two-thirds vote. All in favor? All opposed? Nobody, anybody opposed? Okay, we have to count then. Tellers, we are up. All in favor? Put your hand in the air. Make sure your vote has been counted.
33?
Oh, no, you got it, down here. Yeah, okay.
33 on the left.
33 in the left.
59 in the center.
38 on the right. All opposed?
Five on the left.
Eight in the center.
Eight in the middle.
No, no, the yeses.
59?
59, yeah.
59, so I have 131 to 14.
131 to 14? I'm bad at math, but I think the motion carries. Article 11. 130? Okay, 130.
59, right.
Okay, sorry. What was it now? What's the official?
130 to 14.
130 to 14, okay. Article 11. Yeah. Article 11, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from bill of funds a sufficient sum of money for the replacement of the town-owned fueling facility, and determine whether the appropriation shall be raised by borrowing or otherwise, to see what the town will do about it. Mr. Conway.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. That the town appropriate the sum of $2,600 for the replacement of the town-owned fueling facility, including the payment of costs incidental or related thereto, and to raise the appropriation, the treasurer, with the approval of the town council, is authorized to borrow the sum of $2,600, under and pursuant to General Law, Chapter 44, Section 7.1, or any other enabling authority, and to issue bonds or notes of the town, therefore, to carry out the purpose of this article.
Seconded. Seconded, thank you. Mr. Conway.
So this article is to appropriate funds allowing the town to advance construction of our new fuel islands. The town's intent is to locate this at the Nahat Street Yardways facility, and to close the existing fuel dispensing system at North Ave. This article is being brought forward as the existing facility reaches the end of its expected life, supplying the gasoline and diesel fuel needs for all town-owned operated vehicles and machinery.
Mr. Sullivan.
The Finance Committee recommends favorable action.
Discussion under Article 11. Discussion under Article eleven. Mr. McGlaughlin.
Uh, Bob McGlaughlin, three seventy-six Water Street. Um, hey Joe, I just need a little clarification. It seems to me, uh, two, three, four years ago or so, uh, this article came, uh, this proposal came up. But not down at the pit, but it was at the, at the DPW yard, uh, because the tanks were leaking and am I missing something? Didn't we already bring this up?
Uh, I'm not aware of bringing up anything for reconstruction. Uh, it may have been discussed during, um, some of the discussion that was happening. Related to, uh, the Public Works Facility itself and kind of rehabbing, uh, that property down there.
Okay, so there was no money appropriation or anything to, uh, uh, replace the, the tanks down there and, and do the, uh, the, uh, uh, the pumps and all that other stuff? That wasn't, that didn't happen?
No, negative. Um, so those are at the end of the thirty-year life. Uh, the only monies that were appropriated that had anything to do with this. Was some money, uh, for design that we asked for at town meeting last spring.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Hi, Karen McMaster, twenty-five Nahat Street. Um, I have a lot of questions. Why did we choose this location?
So there's a couple of reasons. Uh, one of them, um, most importantly, the, the site that we currently operate at thirty-five North Ave. Uh, is extremely site constrained. Uh, you can imagine we have a relatively large operation. Um, the facility is smack dab in the middle of our parking lot. So when people come in for fuel, uh, to service the needs of their vehicles, uh, it's right in the middle of our operation. Um, if we're taking a load to delivery of materials, uh, or it's, you know, peak time, uh, for us when we get busy. We actually run into scenarios where someone may come in for fuel and they're forced to back out into North Ave. Um, this location was selected because we have about a hundred and fifty feet of lead space, uh, off of Nahat Street. We can queue, uh, anybody that's looking for their fuel needs off-site, um, and free up some of that.
Okay, so it's convenience is one, but you do realize the problems on the Hahn Street we're already having now?
Absolutely. And the other major consideration with that is that we know that presently existing underneath our building. Uh, is some ugly stuff in the soil, uh, that would have the potential of, of being a liability to us from a cost perspective. The Kaitron building next door has also contributed to some of that. And we're within, you know, a pretty short distance from a place that used to be the Leadline Pipe Company. Which is classified as an even more strict, um, environmental concern. So we don't want to be digging into that and find out that this is going to be something that's going to be substantially, um, costly to the town. If we don't need to. Alternatives were looked at and the intention, um, to propose Nahat Street is there. I should mention though, this is also subject, um, to a hearing at the Board of Appeals. Um, so there'll be a public process, citizen input, uh, and different things that'll be triggered from the vote here tonight.
Um, I, I, I just, it, to me, it just doesn't make sense. Uh, we still have two unresolved forty-B projects. It's just not the traffic. Um, you have people that are bringing yard waste down there constantly. So how is that going to be monitored? You're going to have twenty-four-hour traffic for people going to that facility for every town vehicle. That needs to refuel seven days a week. I don't know. I think we've already taken enough of the burden on the Hahn Street and I don't think this is a good idea. Because the two-point-six million dollars is just a stock, kind of like with the sheds. So are there going to be EV stations there?
No, presently, no.
Um, does the state say that's okay if you're going to start relocating that you don't have an EV station there?
Um, we wouldn't propose that for down there, no.
Okay, just, um, yeah, I, I really think that we need to rethink about this before we move forward. Because if we lock in now, we don't know how much money it's going to be. And again, you have three schools in this area. You have residents going in and out of there with things that are, I don't know. It just doesn't make leaves, gas. It doesn't make sense to me to put it down there at all. Um, there's either got to be a better location or I, I don't know. I just, I'm, I'm not for this at all. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Bob Mitchell, six Baldings Street. Hi, I'm, uh, very concerned and very disappointed about this article. Uh, I'm very disappointed because there's a complete lack of financial detail. No cost benefit analysis. There's no environmental information that you presented at all. If this was in a business situation, you wouldn't get any votes at all for it just based on that fact. How much, how many, about how many gallons of fuel do we use a year?
A hundred and twenty-five thousand.
Hundred and twenty-five thousand. So, so let's say three bucks a gallon, just let's say, I know some diesel, that's about three hundred grand, right? Okay. Right?
Sure.
Okay, okay, right. So it's about three hundred grand. And my understanding is a municipality does not pay, uh, the federal tax, right? Which is about eighteen cents for regular and twenty-four cents for diesel.
We pay a small portion of taxes on the fuel, but we don't pay the same amount that would be in a, a private commercial setting.
You don't pay any federal tax, do you? Uh, can you clarify that?
There is a very small component to fuel that the town is actually not exempt from. Um, but it is not as much as a relative.
Is that federal tax for the third time? Or don't you know?
I don't have that information in front of me now.
Well, you need to know that to present two and a half million dollar expenditure to us. If you're only spending three hundred grand a year on, on fuel. Uh, does your presentation include a basic, a conversation with a local fuel supplier saying? We would like to buy, town will go to, correct me if I'm wrong, Tom Moll, but I believe the municipality has a right to engage in a contract with a local fuel supplier. Have you gone to a local fuel supplier who's already got? The infrastructure built, not in an environmentally sensitive area. It's already built. They maintain it, they service it. Have you asked them what, what the price would be if we bought, say, three hundred thousand gallons, a hundred thousand gallons of fuel a year from them? And what, and what that savings would be? If, if they're, if you're only saving thirty cents a gallon, less the federal tax. Which you would get either way, whether you bought it privately or you had your own facility, you don't pay federal tax, right? As a municipality. So are we talking significant money here? Because we, you have not presented to us what a local supplier would give you for price for a hundred thousand gallons. I'm, I'm, I'm certain they would give you a discount. I'm certain they're available all the time. I'm certain you could easily bring your trucks into that facility and get out of there. As opposed to the problem that you just described right next to the Galvin School. Busy traffic intersection. You're already telling us that you're backing in and out of this, screwing up traffic. You would probably not have a problem like that with these large fuel stations in Wakefield. They'd be glad to have your business. I think the Wakefield, if we weren't in the business right now of having our own fuel supply. I would really doubt why we'd want to engage in it. Also, not right now, but other municipal, uh, vehicles and other power, you know, other power devices you have. Fuel, the, different fuels are now available, or obviously electricity, so forth. I don't want to get into that. I know it's not available today in a large volume for municipalities. I'm, I'm not being Pollyannaish. But I think there's, by doing this, you're reducing the chance of Wakefield taking advantage of alternative fuels. Over the next short future, which is also can be a financial savings to the town. So we're eliminating that. I seriously encourage everybody to vote no for this. We can certainly close down the current facility. Lord knows how much that's going to cost with environmental issues. That's not even here yet. Uh, let that thing get closed. When it gets closed, negotiate with local fuel suppliers on the fuel costs. Run like that for a couple of years, come back.
Fifteen seconds.
Come back to town meeting with, with a respectable financial presentation and say, if we do it in-house, we're going to save thirty thousand dollars a year. Versus buying it from Shell on Main Street. That's what we need to hear from you. We're not hearing it tonight.
Thank you.
Please vote no on this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Eleanor Axelrod nineteen Sheffield Road. Um, I'm sure some of you worked very hard on this. Um, I do wish there was a different approach to land use decisions and that the broader town was more involved. I guess my first question is why was the location omitted on the warrant article? I would think, um, the neighborhood would want to be aware.
Uh, so my, I didn't draft the warrant. I can't speak to that. As far as the location. I mean, it was openly discussed at every meeting to this point. Um, like I said, you know, this is still subject to the hearing that I mentioned. So again, depending on the vote here tonight will trigger the next process. We'll engage the neighborhoods and the different boards that, you know, have jurisdiction over some of the planning at this point.
Okay. Um, months ago, when we, when the town submitted the, the draft open space plan to the state. I asked questions. I was actually shocked to learn that the Nahat Street pit was listed as Article ninety-seven land. As was Strong's Meadow, um, where the old, um, other school up the street in Nahat. Um, I did read some articles, I, you know, it, it is an environmentally sensitive area. There's wetlands, there's a river. Um, up at Strong's Meadow, there's extensive, um, peat deposits. Uh, in fact, it sounds like the old school was buried under twenty-one feet of peat in some places. And so I'm curious if you guys did any kind of geotechnical review? Because having, you know, a big, a large peat deposit and all that organic material is just, um, not wise at all. Uh, you know, a, a peat fire during drought conditions can burn for months. And it has happened in other parts of the states. And so I really would urge us to look at this more carefully, you know, before proceeding to vote or being married to this location. Thank you.
Next.
Scott McCully thirty-two Wallon Road. I was also kind of surprised to see that the location wasn't included in Article ten or Article eleven. I think things like that are very important to make everybody aware. Um, for those who might not be paying as close attention to all the different boards and committees going on, because there's up to forty of them in town. Sometimes it's difficult for people to keep up with the totality of all that. Um, that being said, I, you know, I was kind of joking earlier with the salt shed that it would be built on, you know, you know, probably sixty feet of old leaves. But when you have that much of old material composted there and now you're looking to build a diesel station on top of that. In, in, in area that's going to be very, very congestive with the schools. I just think this is really bad location. Um, somebody mentioned a discussion about this before. We had talked about this at town meeting before about the fuel tanks at the current yard. And there was some life expectancy in doing something with upgrades. And I don't remember what the, the outcome of that was. But just a, a quick question, are the tanks at the current facility, are they above ground or below ground?
It's a combination. So the storage is above ground. It gets pumped into below-ground, um, sumps. And then there's underground piping that comes up through the earth into the dispensers.
So this two-point-six million dollars, this is for the replacement of the town-owned fueling facility. Is, is this solely for the new facility? Or is, does this include the cost of removing the old facility and any contaminants? Because you just mentioned that there could be, you know, who knows what under the ground from the current facility. And if that's abandoned in place, that's just kicking the can down the road. And we're going to keep coming back to, to town meeting for more money for that. So does this money include remediation and cleanup for any of that that's currently there?
It would remove the full closure of that at, uh, North Avenue, yes.
And so has any type of ground testing been done currently where the, where the current one is to know what's, what's in the soil there?
Uh, so we have an activity use limitation on that, uh, that we know of some of that. Um, if we don't need to be digging new lines and different things like that. Most of the work, uh, would be, you know, the top six inches of the surface, so removing the concrete, uh, and different things like that. Where the sumps are, we'd have to take those out and there'd be a limited amount of potential for soils to need to be moved offsite. Uh, if we were to do, uh, open heart surgery on the property, for lack of a better term, then obviously that cost would get exacerbated through that.
So as far as location in this site though, because it's quite large. You have the, the upper half where they dump all the leaves and then you have the, the lower half down below. And then you have like the back half from the Mill Rivers down the back there. Wh- whereabouts on that property? Are you going to be towards that back where the water, where the salt?
No, so subject to the, uh, approval process. But, uh, if we had our druthers, we'd be in past the guard shack up top, uh, just to the left, so centrally located. Um, test bits to this point, um, there'll be cut that's needed, uh, and structural gravel fill to hold up the weight of this. Um, but we do not need to do, uh, piles or anything like that.
One, one last quick comment. Um, he, he, he had mentioned about, um, contracting with a local vendor already. Because I know there's a number of stations in town that do offer diesel. There's a brand-new one. Um, so I really think the town should be going to facilities like that that already have all the infrastructure. Who are already going to maintain, upgrade that. You can buy a lot of diesel for two-point-six million dollars.
You can. I, I don't dispute that at all. Uh, and I think the real large driver to this, so I stand before you today kind of as a surrogate for anybody that, uh, operates any vehicle or any piece of machinery here. And I can tell you that the emergency preparedness component to this is the main driver of it. So if you were to use, uh, any local gas station in town, you'd be relying on a third party. Whereas then relying on whatever their delivery source is, uh, by managing this in-house, we control some of our own destiny. Um, this facility would be equipped for backup generations. So should we have large power outages and things like that. Uh, our goal would be to be able to run, um, twenty-four-seven, three sixty-five, God forbid we shouldn't need to.
I, I can appreciate that. And, and my thought process would be then to contract with maybe two vendors as opposed to just one. But I just see this as a huge exorbitant expense and whether town needs to curl it at this point, so.
You could. I mean, I'll, I'll tell you from the, uh, that perspective that I just mentioned too. So if that one diesel fuel facility, uh, goes down, you'll have to leave town, um, to get, uh, fuel.
As would if yours went down.
As if ours went down, we'd go to the one in town as a secondary.
Uh, Haley Blue, uh, seventy-one Forest Street. Um, I'd like to, thanks and appreciation to the other comments about potentially working with other vendors. I understand like that's an issue, but the infrastructure is already there. We are in a climate and ecological emergency already. Um, the scientists around the world have been screaming at the top of their lungs that we need to be doing something now. And the best thing that we can all do is to stop building new fossil fuel infrastructure. I understand we're not there to electrify everything or, or anything like that. That there does need to be a transition. It should have happened decades ago. It hasn't. We're here now. We need to transition. The first step would be to stop building this new infrastructure. Utilize something existing, um, and on top of the concerns about the sighting and the wetlands. Um, and all the environmental concerns around that. But I would like to ask, seeing that we haven't made that transition yet. What is the plan? Is there a plan to transition away from these outdated infrastructures?
Vehicle infrastructure or the dispensing infrastructure?
To get us to net zero, we need, we needed ideally, the state wanted us there by twenty-twenty-five, but obviously that hasn't happened.
I, I would think so for medium duty and heavy duty, um, you know, as the technology becomes commercially available. That will obviously get rolled into some of our capital decision-making. Uh, presently, as we stand, um, there's a very limited market for that at best. Um, as I could tell you, our, our commitment, um, would certainly trend in that way as soon as, you know, the options are available for us.
So there's still no plan. There's no plan to transition away. I understand the technology isn't there, but we need to be doing more. And we need to find a way to utilize existing infrastructure instead of building new.
Victoria Turner sixteen Wilson Road. Um, I think the other speakers have already addressed the environmental issue more eloquently than I could. But I might be getting ahead of the process here. Have you spoken to Traffic Advisory Committee yet?
No, so that's one of the parts that will come after. Um, you know, should we get a vote to approve the funding? The TAC review and comment period would be a part of this, yes.
Having attended a lot of their meetings lately regarding the forty-B projects that Karen addressed. I don't see them being on board with adding more traffic onto Nahat Street. We are already struggling. Particularly, we're, you know, we're increasing the size of the schools as the superintendent addressed. We're going to have more students in the future, not less. That's more traffic going right by the high school, more students going to the bog. And that street is already pretty dangerous. I don't know when the last time anyone walked Nahat Street was. But people don't stop for pedestrians. They don't wait. I get, my small children and I walk it a lot. We get hit by cars, like near misses a lot. I'm very concerned about adding more traffic to this street. I'm not sure why this site was chosen. There's the environmental issues, there's the traffic issues. It seems like a major concern and I think we need to go back and look. It seems like a major concern, and I think we need to go back and look at other options for this. I appreciate the effort you're putting in, but I don't think this is the one. Thank you very much.
David Bissin, 20 Hancock Road. Do you, was it said before, what percentage of the vehicles are like light-duty pickups? Maybe like an F-150 that has an electric commercial vehicle option?
I can only speak for Public Works, but out of about 143 pieces of fleet apparatus, I believe some between six and eight of them would be classified under 8,500 pounds and considered medium to light duty.
So it's mostly larger trucks that don't necessarily have an EV kind of option at the moment?
Correct.
I would say, you know, I agree with what a lot of the previous speakers have said in that we are in a climate emergency. And we have to find creative ways to not build infrastructure that's going to, I think justify the continued use of fossil-fuel-only vehicles, internal combustion engines for the next, say, you know, 20 to 30 years, the lifetime of the asset that you're considering building. So I do think that kind of a more interim solution, if needed, like a commercial depot that exists already, while we try to take advantage of any new technology that's viable to serve the needs of the DPW is the way to go. And I plan to vote no. Thanks.
Mr. Sullivan. Jim Sullivan, Howard Road. Joe, other than DPW, who fuels up at this site?
This is open to any town department, so Public Works, Police, Fire, Gas and Light, the School Department, Council on Aging, IT. Anybody that has a vehicle registered under the name Town Wakefield.
And then for permitting purposes, you're going to go before Conservation Commission and what other body?
So this would have to go through the Board of Appeals, so we'd start there. We need to have a hearing on this. Through that process, then it triggers a series of other reviews, Traffic Advisory, being the one that we just mentioned, so on and so forth.
So the Conservation Commission would be the body that would protect the wetlands and issue a permit or not issue a permit based on rules and regulations that they enforce on behalf of the state?
Correct. Should this land within their jurisdiction, they will have an opinion to weigh, ability to weigh in on this, yes.
Very good. I got the, they have my full support on whether it would be permitted or not. So I am not concerned about the wetlands because that's the role of the Conservation Commission. Thank you. Oh, yeah, okay, you're next, yeah, sorry.
David Connolly, 310 Albion Street. You mentioned that the current facility was at end-of-life. If this article were not to go through, what would be the plan for the current site? Would you have to spend money to refurbish it? How would that look?
So the current site, we would operate it for as long as it can be operated. The problem we have with it is that the componentry that's required to make it operate is no longer supported. So we would try to keep it going as long as we could, throw as much bubble gum and Band-Aids on it as possible in the short term. We'd also have to alert all the other department heads that they should start planning for some sort of secondary means of fueling, whatever that means to them, ourselves included. In the event that it goes down and we can no longer get, you know, the pieces we need or the componentry we need to make it run, we would have to pump the tanks down, essentially abandon them in place. And then we would probably come back for another Warren article at some point in time for funds to abandon and fully close.
Is there any plan to replace them for less than $2.6 million?
No, not at this time.
And then kind of a different question. People have talked about going through contractors or whatever. What do, are there any local communities nearby us that do that as an option? That don't have their own facility and do use contractors?
I'm sure there are, none that I know off the top of my head. You know, it's not out of the realm of possibility.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Lever.
Thank you. This has been a truly enlightening conversation, and I appreciate the candor with which you're answering questions. I'm a bit concerned that we're getting a lot of I-don't-knows for a presentation requesting $2.6 million in spending when we're also simultaneously hearing that we are facing significant headwinds and we're similarly, thank you, that we're also facing a deficit this year and going forward. So I'm trying to figure out what is, as was previously mentioned, what is the cost-benefit analysis? And the secondary options. I appreciate the desire to have redundancy in suppliers. And there is certainly lots of options for redundancy of selected fuels, of selected options, that using a portion of equipment for as long as needed. And so I'm trying to figure out what other options have been looked at here besides moving it to a site that is extraordinarily problematic in and of itself and was not originally set up for this purpose.
So to that point, the two sites where this could potentially land are in-kind, backward exist now or as proposed, which I would say are both extraordinarily problematic for one reason or another. Landed, your general recent savings average is about 21 cents per gallon. Gasoline, 76 cents per gallon, diesel fuel.
I'm just trying to do the cost-benefit analysis when we also look at the long-term maintenance. We, as was mentioned a few years ago, I believe it was the replace, the top portion of the pump said was nearing the end of its life and needed servicing. This body approved some funds to extend the life of the existing infrastructure. I'm very uncomfortable voting on something that hasn't gone yet before the boards, wasn't actually disclosed in advance as to the full location. So that if there's an approval of this, we've got $2.6 million with a town meeting article and the pressure of that going to the adjudicatory boards, Conservation Commission, Board of Appeals, that puts an undue burden on them to approve what town meeting has already designated based upon very loose information. If we were spending, as we did earlier, for a site plan and to come back to this body for a study, that would be a different art, a different sort of plan. And with that, I do actually recommend that this particular article go for a study so that we can figure out what the options are and what's really in the best interest of the town, including primary usage, secondary usages, and tertiary usages. Thank you. No motion is being made at this time.
I heard, I didn't hear the M-word. Thank you, Dan, bye. You've already been up, correct? No, and all three. Bob, have you been up on this? Yeah, okay, so you guys are all two minutes. Go ahead. Two minutes.
One, I think it's important to consider the financial impact of having to remediate an environmental contamination site. We already have one in town that we're dealing with. Two, with respect to Conservation Commission, speaking personally as a new member, we have very limited ability to regulate and protect. Unless you're building in a wetland, we can put certain conditions to improve things. But if you are building upland and there happens to be a big peat deposit under you, we can't say anything. We can just say, that's stupid. Nobody would put a fueling station on top of charcoal briquettes. But that's about it. We can't actually do anything. We would, so I want to make that clear. Our role is limited to the eight interests of the act, and that's it. And unfortunately, we are not your gatekeepers here.
Thank you. Scott McCully, 32 Wallon Road. So Article 10 and Article 11 both appear to be through the DPW and be presented. But for Article 10, you're here to appropriate money for design and obtain a permit. $395,000 on a 1.7, 1. something, what of a million salt structure. But on Article 11, you're here just to ask for $2.6 million to build this without any design and without any consultation, without going before any of the boards. You're just asking for all the money upfront. So I'm just wondering what the thought process is between these two, that one's significantly different than the other, when you both have to go through the same exact process?
So we're repeating the same process essentially. This one went last year. We got money for some of the structural design that we needed, survey and different things like that, that landed us at the decision to recommend Nahann Street. So last year, we appropriated funds for that design. Now at the point now where we can request construction dollars.
And so for the shed or for the gas pumps?
Gas pumps. So this is actually one step ahead of where the shed is. The shed would be mimicking the same process.
And the Traffic Advisor Committee, I believe, is a town committee, is it not?
Correct.
So did anyone just go to them and say, hey, what do you think about this? We're going to have several hundred vehicles going in and out here, potentially weekly or daily?
Yeah, so two of us at Public Works are on that committee. You know, it's something that we talk about quite frequently. I don't think it's been any secret that this is something that we've been looking at. As far as fueling, you know, it would be the different points throughout, during the day, during the course of business. Bulk, majority of the vehicles that go in there related to Public Works, gas and light. I don't even include the Police Department in there because they have a presence at the facility, operate out of that anyway. So if they're in and out of there anyway, I don't necessarily know or think that that would generate extra trips for the sole purpose of fueling. But that's a discussion that needs to, you know, move forward as we progress.
So how does that work when your, two of your employees are part of the Traffic Advisor Committee? Would you be abstained from that or?
I would have no problem abstaining from that completely.
Okay, just good. All right, thank you.
Yep.
Bob Bogoff on 376 Water Street. The way I see it, there's a couple of things going on here. One is we've got a fueling situation down at the current yard, down the DPW, that's aged out. So you've got to do something, either build a new one or, as one of the other speakers says, go to a vendor. And I'd like to see a study done on the vendor portion of it. And also, I'd like to see, I'd like to see some communication with the boards that have to, that you're going to have to go through too anyway, the ZBA, the CONCOM, et cetera, et cetera, and do that in front of this town meeting. Because if we approve $2.6 million, we're locking ourselves into this. I'm not going to make a motion up there, Mr. Moderator, but I would say that would be my suggestion is to do the first before we get to this. Because I think we're doing it, I think we're doing it backwards, to be honest with you. That's my opinion. Thank you.
Yep, honestly, to that point, we're just following, this is the same process we did. Same order of events when we replaced the water tank. So we found, you know, that the vote was favorable to fund the construction. Then at that point, we invested the time of the boards, you know, town staff and things like that to vet out the rest of the details, iron it out, and come to a conclusion.
And then come for the money. Okay, thank you.
Have you, have you been up yet?
Not on this.
Not on this, okay, fine, okay.
Derek Gary, 152 Broadway. I, I love you guys. I don't want to feel like I'm beating up on the Public Works.
Nope.
I understand the need for the fuel. I understand that we can't transition that right now. And for those who don't understand this, I'm involved in this industry peripherally. It doesn't exist. There are no snowplows that can run on electric right now. There are no major haulers or excavation equipment that can run on electric right now in our environment. Okay, we're stuck with it for a while. My concern with this is, as a regular user of the pit, getting in and out of there is impossible. So I'm going to assume that there is going to be some major shift in ingress and egress?
Not at this time. So that is going to be discussed as a potential. But what we want to make sure is that with an article to come later and some of the changes that happen related to the high school, it probably makes sense to tee the intersection up and redo the entryway to that. But that would come as a second phase to this.
So are there any plans that exist right now for what this is going to look like?
There's just a plan. Basically, we have the details and dimensions of what the facility actually is as far as the tanks, the dispensers, or the explosion-proof cabinetry and things like that, what the foundation plan we needed underneath it. We have a general idea of where it's going to be located. Again, subject to the comments that get, you know, delivered to us that may, you know, tweak, move slightly. But, you know, I'd say it's probably 75% at this point. And then pending on further discussion, it'll land.
So we know what the station is going to look like. But as far as the access to it is concerned and the impacts that might have on the area around it, that's an open question until we go through Conservation, we go through all these other pieces.
As far as access, we're not proposing anything, any changes to the curb cuts presently. I can tell our staff has run the turning templates for tractor-trailers and long, straight trucks that can navigate, albeit slow, they can navigate the gates the way that they are. So, you know, that can function as it is now. And then as the rest of the infrastructure work that happens in the general area materializes, we can kind of incorporate that into it to make sure that all of it, you know, makes sense, but.
I, I appreciate all of that. And I do want to second what was said earlier, that I think this is a little bit backwards. I would feel much more comfortable voting on this if we had heard from Conservation, if we had heard from Traffic, if we had some sense of what this was going to look like, where it was going to be on the site, and how the traffic impacts are going to work down there. Because that's already like an avenue of disaster on some mornings. And if we start having trucks queuing up, waiting to get in on that, you know, it's uneven. It's tough. You know, a lot of us know. So I'm voting against it, and I recommend others do as well.
Hi, Marie Oliver on Nahann Street. I just want to remind everybody that there's a reason on Nahann Street that it doesn't allow truck traffic. And that certainly needs, needs to be thought of as we'll, I mean, you, you mentioned big, big vehicles, and the streets certainly can't handle that. So thank you.
Have you been up yet on this?
No.
Okay.
Sarah Murphy, 32 Crystal Street. I thought, I heard you say that we've had this come up before a town meeting where it was more of the question of designing and obtaining permits like it is for the shed. Is that the case? That was the case for this?
No, so last year, we asked for design money because we needed to do some of the subsurface work and survey needed to cite this.
Okay, how much was that funding? I'm relatively new to town, so I'm not sure of the history here.
I believe the Warren article was for $150,000.
And is there a report or has there been something shared for the results of that survey at this point?
I believe it was included in the packet for the town council meeting and the finance committee have seen what was generated out of that with a preliminary site plan.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, Bob Mitchell, 6 Pauling. I just want to thank everybody and the officials for being really attentive to this important issue. I will move the question, so just bear with me and I'll move the question. Get to vote on this promptly. I believe earlier you said that you're thinking, you're saving about 20 cents a gallon, 30 cents a gallon, as opposed to buying it off the street?
Correct. When you compare that to the retail data, yes.
So if you're doing 100,000 gallons a year, you're talking 20, 30,000 dollars a year you're going to save here?
Somewhere between 50 to 60,000, I believe.
50 to 60, okay, without negotiate, without even, without giving, without presenting a financial analysis on a negotiated price of a local vendor, 50 grand. So just, just forgetting the environmental issues, forgetting the traffic issues, why would anybody in their blank and right mind spend $2.6 million to save maybe 50 grand a year? I mean, that's just, I'm not even going to say. But just so, just briefly, and I appreciate your honesty. You've been great. So I really do appreciate that. Thank you. You know, the cost-benefit ratio, the lack of financial presentation here, the cost-benefit ratio just doesn't justify spending $2.6 million, period. Alternative fuel vehicles are underway. I don't know how they're going to address, you know, the large vehicles a DPW has. That's not the conversation for tonight, but I think it's in most people's minds. Certainly, we need a negotiated price with some local suppliers. Traffic, I don't think is a great traffic situation.
10 seconds.
Yep. And I'm not convinced also that if there's a power outage, you couldn't get gas or diesel at a fuel station in Wakefield. I don't think anybody's ever experienced that. Or if you had to drive to Redding for 3 miles, I don't think that's a problem. So I encourage you to vote no. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, there being, being no further discussion, the motion before you is to raise and appropriate through borrowing the amount of $2,600,000. I anticipate we're going to need the tellers. All in favor, put your hands in the air. Keep them raised until you're sure your vote has been counted.
Mr. Moderator, 11 in the center.
Seven in the left.
All opposed. Oh, wow.
30 on the left.
57 in the center.
115 to 40 does not pass. Article 12. See if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from bill of funds a sufficient sum of money for the environmental remediation of town-owned property at 94 Butler Ave. And determine what the appropriation shall be raised by borrowing otherwise to see what the town will do about it. Mr. Mayo.
That the town appropriate the sum of $1.3 million for the environmental remediation of town-owned property at 94 Butler Ave, including the payment of costs incidental or related thereto. And to raise this appropriation, the treasurer, with the approval of the town council, is authorized to borrow the sum of $1.3 million under and pursuant to General Law, Chapter 44, Section 7, Subsection 1, or any other enabling authority and to issue bonds or notes of the town, therefore to carry out the purposes of this article.
Sir, a second. Mr. Renaud.
Good evening, Mr. Moderator. Bill Renaud, Town Engineer. Article 12 requests town meeting approval for borrowing authorization of $1.3 million to complete the environmental cleanup required at the 97 Butler Ave property. The November 2020 regular town meeting overwhelmingly supported the acquisition of the 97 Butler Ave parcel for $2.15 million to settle a claim with the prior owner, The Woods LLC. As part of that settlement, the town received an environmental insurance policy of $1 million to cover costs associated with the environmental cleanup. Unfortunately, the cleanup cost, unfortunately, the cost of work required to complete the cleanup will exceed the policy's value. Since acquiring the property in 2020, the town has hired a licensed site professional to obtain the requisite DEP approvals to install a cap over the contaminated soil on the parcel. These files included, these filings included, Phase 2 Comprehensive Response Action Plan, which submitted soil and groundwater testing results for the site, a Phase 3 Remedial Action Plan, which provided approval of the town's preferred cap installation option over a much more expensive soil remove, removal option that would have cost the town close to $20 million in cleanup costs, a Phase 4 Remedy Implementation Plan, which provided final approval of the proposed cap details and work plan. I should note that the DEP, in approving the cap installation, has required that the town restrict the use of the cap area for passive recreation. That's what's shown in the yellow area on the slide you're looking at. Jumping to the next slide. So the Department of Public Works has also obtained approval from Wakefield's Conservation Commission for the, as the proposed project has work area located within 100 feet of a wetland. This slide provides a rendering of the parcel's proposed scope as approved by the DEP and our Conservation Commission. These highlights include grading to install a new 18-inch soil and geotextile cap, installation of a new wildflower seed mix for all disturbed areas. Those areas are both shown in the light green on the slide, installation of a new gravel walkway that's shown towards the center of the parcel, and replacement plantings, replacement planting of trees and shrubs within the regraded area. Those are shown as the dark green and brown areas on the slide. Approval of Article 12 will allow the town to meet its environmental remediation obligations with DEP and provide the town a usable passive recreation area. I respectfully ask your support for Article 12 and would be happy to answer any questions.
Mr. Sullivan.
The Finance Committee recommends favorable action.
Any discussion?
Bob Glavon, 376 Water Street. Historically, some people in this room may not know exactly what we're talking about here, but I remember a little bit about it. But does anybody have the history of this site and why we're here for this, for this article?
All right, so yeah, as I mentioned, the town purchased the property at 97 Butler Ave back in 2020. So as part of that, that was to settle a claim that we had with the prior owner. So as part of that, we basically took over the requirement for the cleanup. There's a section that's above this area that I'm showing in the highlighted slide here that is, that's not contaminated, that could potentially be sold off to recoup some of these funds.
Well, my understanding, and somebody can correct me if I'm wrong, is is when the Atwell School caught on fire back in 1970 or '71, something like that, somebody, somebody in the town did somebody a favor that owned the land on, down in Butler, and they needed some fill. And they took the, they took components and fill and debris from the Atwell School that burnt down. And they brought it down to Butler. And I think that, I don't know, was it the town, I don't know what it was. I don't know whether there was any money involved, but, but that, that is exactly where the asbestos came from, if I'm correct. Does anybody know that for a fact?
Steve, you know this, right? Yeah.
That is the alleged story.
Thank you. Mr. Memory is working today. So, so, so because somebody did somebody a favor back in 1970 or '71, this is costing us an awful lot of money, right, for, you know, for that little deal right there. So, so we ended up, so, so in 2020, we purchased the property. So now we basically have to clean it up. Is that all right?
Correct.
Okay, for $2.5 million bucks.
For, well, the request is for $1.3 million additional today.
But we spent $1 million to buy it to begin with.
$2.15 million to buy it, right?
Okay. And so it's going to be turned into a park?
Uh, yes, it will.
Okay, perfect. Okay, thank you. I just wanted to clear that up.
Well, part, the part that's contaminated will. The upper section will be a future development, but we haven't vetted that out yet as to what that will look like.
Oh, so we can recoup some of the money?
I'm hoping a good chunk of it.
Okay, perfect. Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Paul Donaco, 17 Wiley Street. Mr. Moderator, you. Bill, we had the $1 million insurance policy?
We do. Yep.
You're asking for another $1.3 million?
On top of that, yes.
On top of that now?
Yep.
According to your picture right now, is the purple or is it the hatch lines that the, uh, cap is? Where's the showing?
The cap, the cap's the green area, the light green area. So the blue is the wetland area. That's kind of the toe slope.
The green area is, the entire green area is the cap?
Yes.
Including the road?
It's, the road's not shown. The, that, you're talking about the gray in the middle? That's a walkway, gravel walkway.
Ah, so, so the rest of the property's not shown?
You're correct. Yeah, I'm just showing the cap area on this.
I'm only seeing the cap there. How much of the, how much of the overall land parcel is the cap?
So the cap is a pro, so the yellow that's shown on this slide, that is the, the cap area with the remaining area being, you know, I wouldn't say the whole area is, is developable, but the upper section would be. The lower section's wetland, so if you're looking to the left of the yellow, that would be wetland.
It's been a while since I looked at these maps. So, so anything's east or south of that yellow is wetlands?
Correct.
And the cap is about maybe two and a half acres?
I think it's a little lower than that, but say, say two.
So the developable portions, everything to the north of that yellow?
Yeah, and, and at this point, we haven't had really a lot of dialogue on what that development would look like and, you know, where we would go.
Potential if that happens. Okay, so. Excuse me.
Are you backing away or?
I'm just, I'm, I'm choosing my words in my head before they come out of my mouth. How's that sound? Okay?
Like a good idea.
Because, because I know Bill will make a comment one way or the other.
No, I just did.
Yeah, I know. I'm going to step away from the mic for a minute. Thank you.
Thank you.
Dennis Clarity, 1 Harvis Road. Is this under the Park Commission or is it sellable through the selectmen?
Selectmen, or the town council. What, what do you mean?
Town meeting.
I think you did that, didn't you do that in your original motion, Steve?
Yeah, yeah.
No, I think that anything, I think town meeting would have to approve the selectmen to sell it. If, if we sold anything. Excuse me, town council.
Town council?
Yeah.
Do you have any plans to sell this property?
No. No. That, that'd be the next step. We had to find out what area we need, we needed to cap. We've been through DEP. And then the next step will be to look at the developing area and have meetings with the neighborhood and what have you.
Is there any chance of putting this under the Park Commission?
I guess there's always a chance. We would not recoup any money, though. That's the thought process.
This area would be put into some type of conservation restriction. So that was required through our conservation permit. So we would, we would do that for the lower section.
Could I make a motion to put this under the Park Commission?
Well. Yeah, what's your point of order?
If I'm not mistaken, in town council, can, can correct me. The, the council, the town council sits as the Park Commission is in the city or, or the town of Wakefield.
Okay.
Yeah, that's what I was getting up to say. Tom Mullen, I'm the town council. And we don't have a park commission as such. We have a town council, C-O-U-N-C-I-L, which serves as a board of selectmen and as a number of other things, including a park commission.
So this was, this land was bought back from the developers, correct?
Yes.
And, but why did the developers not pay when they owned the land? Why did they not pay for the cleanup?
Well, they had an environmental policy that we acquired, when we acquired the parcel. And that was part of the, a deal that the town made to purchase, to purchase the property.
When they, they sold the land to, the town sold the land?
Dennis, the town purchased the land as part of a legal settlement. And it went to town meeting in 2020, so.
So the town sold the land?
No, town purchased the land from the developer.
But, but originally, the town sold the land to the developer?
No, no, the town never owned the land.
The town never owned the land?
No.
Thank you for clearing that up.
Okay. Mr. Donaco, do you want back in or you're just standing there?
You know something, Mr. Moderator? Sometimes leaving a rip seal will prevent a shitload of problems.
Whoa, whoa, whoa! Apology accepted. All right, any further discussion? What are we on? 12? On the motion under Article 12, there being no discussion, motion to appropriate $1,300,000 through borrowing for the purposes of this article. Tellers, I think you're going to be up on this. It's two thirds, right, Tom? Yeah, it's two thirds. Tellers, you're up. All in favor, put your hand in the air and keep it in the air.
Thank you, sir.
35 on the left.
63 in the middle.
All opposed. Put your hand in the air. Make sure you're counted. Three on the left.
One in the center.
133 to 5, motion carries. Article 13, to see if the town will vote to authorize the town council pursuant to General Law, Chapter 40, Section 14, and any other applicable authority to accept a grant of drainage easements on the property known and numbered as 39 Grafton Street, Wakefield, Mass. And to raise or appropriate the sum of $1 to carry out the purposes of this article to see what the town will do about it. Mr. Renaud, are you making this motion?
I am making this motion. That the town raise and appropriate from tax levy the sum of $1 to carry out the purpose of this article.
Sir, a second. Mr. Renaud.
Thank you. Article 13 requests town meeting approval to accept two drainage easement areas at the, at the 39 Grafton Street property. The first easement area shown in yellow on the slide is a 10-foot wide drain easement located over an existing town culvert on the property. The second easement shown in brown supports DPW's planned reconfiguration of street drainage in Grafton Street. The homeowner is supportive of these easement locations and I respectfully request your support for Article 13.
Second, thank you. You all said, are you this? Yeah, I'm okay. All right, well, I'm just checking. I always hate to cut you out. Actually, I forget.
Finance Committee recommends favorable action.
There we go. All right, planning board, yes. On my scorecard, yes.
Planning Board also recommends favorable action.
Any discussion? The motion before you is that the town raise and appropriate from the tax levy the sum of $1 to carry out the purposes of this article. All in favor? All opposed. Anyone oppose? Unanimous. Thank you. Oh, there's one? You're opposing it? We have to count now. Okay, everybody up. We know there's no, so all in favor? 35 on the left.
62 in the center. Sixty-two in the center.
Thirty-six, all opposed. Anybody else? I don't see any other ones, do you? One.
One on the left.
One thirty-three to one, motion carries. Uh, anybody, anybody? Anybody, almost ten o'clock, anybody? Bueller? Oh, we got one more, okay, all right, one more. Okay, Article fifteen.
Fourteen.
Fourteen, oh, fourteen, I'm sorry, jeez, here I am getting ahead of myself when I, oh, okay, all right, okay. Oh, I see, okay. To see if the town will vote to authorize the town council pursuant to general law, chapter forty, section fourteen, and any other applicable authority to accept a grant drainage easement on the property known as and numbered as seventy Butler Ave, Wakefield, Mass, and to raise the appropriate sum of one dollar to carry out the purposes of this article, see what the town will do about it, Mr. Renaud.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, I move that the town authorize the town council to accept a grant of, of drainage easements and to abandon any such easements, which are thus rendered unnecessary, on the property known and numbered as number seventy Butler Ave, and to raise and appropriate the sum of one dollar to carry out the purpose of this article.
Second.
Article fourteen requests town meeting approval to abandon a portion of a drainage easement located on seventy Butler Ave. The resident has requested a five-foot easement reduction as shown in brown on the slide to line up with the lot's side yard setback line. The existing pipe was surveyed and will still be contained within the reduced easement width and can be properly maintained by DPW. I respectfully request your support for Article fourteen, and would be happy to answer any questions.
Mr. Sullivan.
Finance Committee recommends favorable action.
Any discussion? There being no discussion, a motion be, oh, you're up, oh, planning board, I'm sorry, right, yeah, sorry, sorry. Gotta raise your hand.
Planning board also recommends favorable action.
Right, sorry. Any discussion? Be no discussion, a motion before you is that the town raise and appropriate from the tax levy the sum of one dollar to carry out the purposes of this article, all in favor? All opposed? Okay, all in favor, put your hand up. Thank you. So, yeah, you all done? What's the next one, fifteen? Oh. No, no. Fifteen, is fifteen next, are you making a motion?
Sixty-five in the center.
That's, you got thirty-five on the left? All opposed? One. Oh, there's more, oh, sorry. Somebody else joined the fray. Two, two on the left. Fifteen. One thirty-nine to two, motion carries. Anybody, yeah, come on, we're coming back, come on, yeah. Yeah.
Mr. Moderator, I make a motion that we move, uh, and adjourn the meeting tonight and move to Thursday, the next available meeting night, I believe.
Sir Second? Yeah, discussion? Any discussion on the motion? All in favor? All opposed? Oh, you're gonna have to count it, kids, there you go. That's the way I see it. All in favor of the motion to come back later for the rest of the articles we're gonna have to do anyway? Just saying.
Nine fifty.
Yeah. Where's Tom Lucy? Where's Tom Lucy?
Twenty-three on the left.
Forty-three.
You got that, Bessie, twenty-three?
Dan, what were you, Dan?
He was twenty-three.
Huh?
Forty-three in the center.
Forty-three in the center.
Bill, you got it, twenty-three on the left?
Twenty-three. All opposed? Oh, okay, pack it up.
Nine on the left.
Fifteen in the center.
Twenty-four? Okay. Eighty-five to forty-five, see you Thursday, thank you.